Good morning. I'm being informed that it's -- I don't have my computer with me today. And I do, but I haven't opened it. Okay. My cellphone is telling me it's 10 o'clock, so I'll trust that. So at this time, I called to order the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners' special meeting for advisory board appointments today, December 14, 2023. I would ask you to all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Wes Rice today.
If you'll join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you all for coming, and I have a couple of comments before we get into the appointment process or into the opening public comment. There have been times that members of the public have not -- have articulated that our advisory boards are, for one way or another, not doing their job, and I would contend otherwise. And I just want to recognize the fact that -- and it's really good to see all of you here today, okay? Because I can assure you that I really appreciate the members of our advisory boards -- we have about 20 of them -- and their activities, and most of that is in a volunteer manner. And so we appreciate it, and there is no way that I, as Commissioner, and I feel -- I think the rest of the Commissioners would share with me, there is no way that we could do our job without your input. Your input is extremely important for us, and we appreciate you coming forward and reapplying for these boards and being on these boards, because a lot of times, your activities go unnoticed. They're kind of in the background. Very few people, as I'm sure you know, attend your meetings, but you do some critical work for us on behalf of the county, and we rely heavily on your input. So anyways, we appreciate that, and we look forward to this process. Some people have asked, why is this process taking place in December versus January? And so I'll tell you, the process or the procedure has been in the past and perhaps will continue in the future, is that in a non-election year, where we are not going to have any new Board of Commissioners sitting on this, we go ahead and do it in December, generally, to accommodate the ability of reconstituting all of our advisory boards so they can move into January fully constituted and not have any delay time. However, in an election year, we feel it's important that any new Commissioners should have some input as to who those appointments are, and so that's why we always delay the process until January in an election year. So this year, it's in December; next year, it will more than likely be in January, one of the first two days of January after the board is -- board is constituted, and then we'll probably -- the next couple of days, generally, is when we do the board appointments and then go into the normal business of the board. So I hope that addresses that question. So at this time, we're into public comment, and public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the board chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin and then a yellow light, which indicates you have 30 seconds left and should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, we ask you to please sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified for possible action and closing public comment. If you plan to speak on a specific agenda item that is on the administrative agenda and identified for possible action, which is everything today is for possible action, then please provide your public comment when that agenda item is heard. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the County Board of Commissioners. Public comment. Oh, and I should acknowledge the fact that Commissioner Tarkanian, his son is recovering from surgery, and they're doing that at their -- in Las Vegas, and so Commissioner Tarkanian has joined us via Zoom online. Thank you very much, Mr. Tarkanian, for joining us down there.
So you heard my cough, huh?
Is that what you're trying to do, is stay away from us also? Okay. So -- and with your indulgence, Commissioner Hales has moved down a chair just to make us a little bit more compact here rather than sitting down there on an island down there by herself. So anyways, thank you, and I'm sorry I interrupted your public comment.
Good morning. I am Tim Degelder, your Douglas County Public Library Director. Good morning, Commissioners, fellow staff, and citizens of Douglas County. I would just want to take the opportunity to introduce Nick Mahler of Troop 495. They did an Eagle Scout project for the library, and he's going to tell you what they did.
Hi, my name's Nick. So I did an Eagle project at the library, and I made a base with pavers to put a shed on top of it so they can store books inside of it. And then after I did that, I built a sidewalk going across both sheds so they can wheel their carts in and out of the sheds, and then I also painted the shed that got the new shed that was there. I believe that's all I did.
That's not just all.
Do you guys have any questions for me today?
I do. So first of all, I'm an Eagle Scout, so once an eagle, always an eagle. And you can confirm that on my license plates of my Mustang. So anyways, anyways, I don't see your merit badge stash on you today. How many -- where are you at in regards to merit badges?
I only believe I need two more merit badges to get my eagle.
Okay. So that should come fairly quickly, right?
Yes.
Yeah, good for you. So, okay. I'm raising a -- well, I'm not raising -- my daughter's raising a grandchild. He's a tinderfoot, so I hope at some point in time -- I'm trying -- I keep putting this out in public to kind of put pressure on him. I want to be able to, at some point in time down the road here, pin my eagle -- I still have it -- on his chest.
Yeah.
So anyways, congratulations, and I compliment you on hanging in there. I know it's a difficult task, and you have a lot to do. In 1964 -- I'm dating myself -- 1964, when I got my eagle, we didn't have to do community projects, so as you're doing. So I don't know when that --
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rice. Okay. Any other questions by the Commissioners of this? We don't normally do this during public comment, but okay. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. G --
I don't know if Nick and I were sharing our three minutes, but when two organizations work together, I think it just builds our community so much better. There's a couple of things going on at the library I want to give -- since Nick was here, there's some organizations, just a couple of things we're working together. The United Way of Northern Nevada, they're going to sponsor Dolly Parton Imagination Library for Douglas County. What that means is any child under five, you can sign up, and they will mail books to your house once a month. So anyone in Douglas County, sign up and do that. Our Winter Read, January and February, read two books. You get a chance to win a quilt from the Carson Valley Quilt Guild, who's working with us to give you a nice prize. Read two books. Senior Corps of Retired Executives, they're actually going to do a Basics to Starting Your Business in January. So if you're thinking about maybe I've been always wanting to get involved in my business, we've got the Senior Corps of Retired Executives. We have a new teen room at the library. Backpack Buddies, which is an organization that makes sure school-age kids get food. They give snacks to the teen room, so when kids come over after school and they're hungry, they have something to eat. So Backpack Buddies, thank you for that. Friends of the Library is sponsoring. Claire Frank Burnt Author Talk on January 27th. Claire ran off at the age of 17 and joined the firefighters that fight fires in the mountains, and she's going to talk about her life, starting out as working as a firefighter all the way to the very top, who's in charge of all of fighting forest fires. And finally, our Friends of the Library. If you haven't seen -- visited Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus, they'll be at the library tomorrow, so you can see if you're on the naughty list or the nice list and get Ask Santa or something. So once again, I think we have a stronger library and stronger community if you see how we're working with some of these other organizations. So when you support them, in turn, you support other groups in the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Degelder. Do we have an additional public comment?
Good morning, all. I provided a similar comment to the Planning Commission on Tuesday. I'm certainly not perfect. I make mistakes, and I hope you will correct me in a timely manner. I understand it's the public's responsibility to know location and time of meetings. I believe Jim Jackson, who speaks often during meetings, missed an opportunity at the recent Planning Commission because the time is posted on the agendas, but continuity matters to the public. I know the county has a lot of vicious issues and business to tidy up before 2024, but with the new year approaching, I'm hopeful that upcoming meetings will have less hiccups, I'll call them. There should be accountability to the public as well as the presenters who come to attend and expect to hear an item as noticed. At a recent meeting, we had a two-hour break. That's a little bit much. A year ago, a vacation home rental meeting was postponed due to noticing. The Board of Commissioners meeting on December 6 trails plans announcements of removal to be continued was not quite handled administratively at the beginning of the meeting. Staff was left waiting in the aisle back before us. I want to thank the county manager for getting that corrected. My opinion, there is a genuine lack of decorum at some of these meetings. I hope that gets corrected as well. The debate for Zoom should be an option for the public again. All other jurisdictions still allow this option. With the snow season approaching, I ask you to reconsider that option, especially for the Tahoe Township constituency that may have to use unsafe roads. With that said today, I attended the NDOT meeting on Monday and commented on a few issues related to Douglas County. One of them was the Speed Management Action Plan. NDOT recognized every county except Douglas. I pointed that out, and staff took note. Also, there is another corridor management plan, the Southern Sierra Corridor Management Plan, that starts at Carson City at the I-80 intersection, goes all the way to the California-Nevada border. I hope that there will be more than just the two meetings, and I stated that before NDOT. It's very important. Our Airport District look at commenting on that, depending on what might be proposed for that portion. North County is a little different. The South Shore Area Plan was mentioned by the planning staff. I understand there's four amendments. I think I know what two of them are. I hope there will be a presentation soon. With that said, I beat the dead horse. Community plans in the valley need to be updated, and we have a perfect opportunity to do that at the inception of the 2024 Master Plan kickoff. And lastly, the TRPA Governing Board meeting yesterday was a marathon meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Rice, for hanging in there as long as we could.
I'm sorry, but --
I just -- I attended the Transportation Committee --
I'm sorry, Ms. --
-- and there is -- okay. I will send in -- I'll do it at closing public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you? Nice hat. We'll cut you some slack today, Chairman. I'm going to read from the chronological postings on Douglas County Nevada Watch site. This is a Facebook site along with Megatrends 2023 and State of the Nation 911. Yesterday, unbeknownst to the vast majority of sleeping giants in Douglas County, your debt commission passed a $37 million bond. That bond is going to bound and bind you to the highest capital investment in the history of Douglas County in a time of absolute uncertainty. Four weeks ago, they wanted $57 billion, or 57 million. This time, they asked for 37. That doesn't include the $10 million already invested in the project, which happens to bring us -- well, which is a conservative guess, as to how much this is going to cost us, which will be upwards of $120 to $130 million. It's interesting that in the articles of Confederation in our Historic U.S. Constitution study book, that the debt of this fledgling nation back in the day was about $42 million, which is equivalent to the $47 billion that we're in debt today, which happens to be a fractal of the same social engineering scheme that this board is following in suit. This is basically a version of the federal government on a localized municipal level. That's what you're looking at here. They follow in the same footsteps. So the meeting occurred at 9:00 without Zoom Conference Utility or YouTube because they don't want you to know about it. They don't know what -- they don't want people to have a record of it. They don't want them to access it online. We will scroll down here and just shift gears into the same maladministrative principle behind the building that's blocking you down, is the same principle that we can refer to with Joey Gilbert, whose budget is now going to be a $450,000 legal obligation to Douglas County, which is a 266% increase in his fees. He's related to the Gilbert clan, who runs the Justice Township Court there. We'll also note that Wesley Rice and his wife are facing felony criminal charges, guilty by association there, Commissioner, by Aaron Ford. So congratulations, you made headline news. And we know that the White House is warning us with a cyber attack and an inevitable challenge, which is going to test every single one of us, and we're going to see who's real and who's not.
Thank you. Do we have additional public comment?
It's always a tough act to follow. At the last --
Need your name, Mr. Jackson.
Jim Jackson. Not all here this morning, but I was watching the -- I was at the meeting when you were talking about the development on Vicki Lane. After a lot of machinations back and forth, you came up with the conclusion that you would allow it if they put in a road down to Hayborn. Hayborn down at that end is a dirt road. Now, if I was that developer, I'd say, okay, I'll put in a dirt road down to the dirt road. I'm not going to pave it. There's no reason to pave it. Nobody will ever use it then. So that whole regular road was a waste of time, if the developer even accepts that proposal. But happening at the very last minute, I don't think enough thought goes into these changes that are put up there. And the develop -- I watched the planning people back here. The minute you guys started looking like you weren't going to pass it, they all started whispering with each other, getting their books open, looking at the developer. Are they working for us, or are they working for the developers? I've seen that happen a couple of times. I don't think they're working for us. I think they're really working for the developers. Anyway, there's another one that's coming up down in Gardinerville. Eighty-some homes on 30-some acres. It doesn't fit with the community. They want to change the codes, they want to change the variances in them, whatever it is that they want to do so that they can make smaller lots instead of the lot sizes that are in the community. Don't let them do it. If they want to build their development, fine, but stick with what you've got down there. If it's zoned for acre lots, make them build acre lots. Don't let them build third-acre lots. It doesn't fit with the community. The other thing that I'm curious about is the speed limits on Johnson Lane were changed not too long ago, down to 35 from Vicki all the way to the top and from the top to the BLM at 25. I'm not sure who made the changes, how they got changed, but if it was something that the county did, and if they were allowed to change that, why can't we change the weight limits on Johnson Lane? That'll stop Painted Rock Mine from using it as a thoroughfare. That's coming up before too long. I think it needs to be handled somehow. We've asked you many times to do that. The other thing is, is that a couple meetings back, I had made a request. At the corner of Tony Court and Fremont, there are weeds growing on both sides, plugging up the culvert that goes underneath the road. The gentleman's well was leaking. That has been taken care of. I understand the state stepped in to do that. The county still has not done anything about the weeds, and it's not the weeds on its property, it's the weeds that are right up to the road, up in our top of the hill. When you came up there to scrape it, you scraped 10 feet back. Down there, you haven't done a thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Okay, sensing no additional public comment, we'll bring it back to the board, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda as presented.
So, mode.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Noah Saz, second by Commissioner Rice to approve the agenda as proposed. Sensing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes 5 to 0. We'll go into administrative agenda. We'll go into item number one, just to let the applicants know how we're going to proceed here. We'll read the item. We will allow the applicants two minutes, two minutes to address the board if they have anything that they wish to add to their resumes or additional information they feel is important regarding their possible appointment to the boards that they're applied for. You're not required, if there's no additional information, you're not required to approach the podium. And so -- and then after that, if the Commissioners have questions, they're free to ask questions. And then we'll go to public comment, and then after public comment, we'll come back and take action on that particular board. So we'll follow the agenda just as it is here. The first one is for possible action discussion on two member-at-large appointments to the 911 Surcharge Advisory Committee for a two-year term, beginning January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2025. Ms. Davidson, did you have anything that you wish to add to this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, county manager, for the record. Just as a point of procedure, I would like to make sure that we indicate the process for those individuals who are curious of how we sought applications. So for each of the board's committees and commissions that you're being asked to consider making an appointments today, staff announced the various vacancies and solicited applications to be discussed at the special meeting. We announced these vacancies using the county's website, social media, The Record Courier, and the Tahoe Tribune, so that you had the best applicants in front of you today. With regard to the 911 Surcharge Advisory Board, there are two individuals who have applied. Both individuals have previously served in this capacity, and staff recommend that they continue to serve. Additional information regarding each of the purposes and authorities under which these board's committees and commissions were created are contained within the background information in the packet. For the sake of brevity, I will not go into that information unless you have specific questions for me today. With that, Mr. Chairman, I turn it back over to the Commission, and it is your pleasure. What you would like to do next?
Thank you. I do want to add that the -- what we're discussing today is the acceptability or during public comment, we're discussing the acceptability or unacceptability of a candidate to fill in that role, okay? We're not discussing the activities of that board or their purview, okay? So I just want to make sure that during public comment, we restrain ourselves to the acceptability or unacceptability of a particular candidate. So with that, we'll go to -- we have Ms. -- I recognize her, Ms. Mills, Christine Mills, who wishes to add something, I suppose, to your resume, so.
I don't really have anything to add, except thank you for having me here and considering me. This would be my fourth term. I believe our committee has done some great things and made some great changes in emergency response in Douglas County. And if anyone has any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for this candidate?
No, sir.
Mr. Tarkanian, any questions for this candidate?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is Mr. Calora here, and does he -- I'm not familiar with Mr. Calora, so my apologies, but if he's here then adds anything he wishes to add. It doesn't look like anybody's standing up, so, okay. So then, at this time, we will ask for public comment in regards to the acceptability or unacceptability of either of these two individuals for appointment to the 911 Surcharge Board.
Jason Gibson with the Mal-administrated Audit Council in and for Douglas County. For the last three years, we've asked this dinosaur corporate body politic to decentralize the responsibilities that the five people that run this county assume. We're supposed to have 22 committees in our board's norms and procedures who help this board to formulate policy decision, but they don't really exist. That's why you don't have the year-end reports from these committees today or this month, because they don't exist. We're asking them to compensate the folks who volunteer and stop using the volunteers.
Mr. Gibson.
This work is excessive.
Mr. Gibson, I need -- Mr. Gibson, do you have any comments regarding the acceptability or unacceptability of either Mr. Calora or Ms. Mills to serve on this board? I haven't -- okay, please get to that, okay?
We have one applicant because we're not giving these folks incentives. We need professionals on our norms and boards, and we need people to be inspired. You know how much information and how much work and stress that goes into filtering this information. Why can't you compensate these people $500 to $750 a month to attend two meetings? Why won't you hire folks and give them some support so they can do a quality job in providing service to the board?
Mr. Gibson, this board is recognizing that you're off-point again, so please --
I'm not off-topic. You got one applicant. You should have at least five.
I'm sorry, we don't.
It's the 911 Surcharge Committee. It's one of the most important --
I would remind -- I would -- Mr. Gibson, if you cannot conduct yourself with proper decorum, we would ask you to leave the premises.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, if I may, I don't want compensation for this position. I do it to serve my community. That's the reason I do it, is we all need to contribute. We don't all need to be taken to the bank. We do have a full five-member committee. We have two applicants today. And Mr. Gibson, with all due respect, you're an idiot.
Okay. Please, please, okay? Okay, please, please, okay. We have a lot of appointments today, and we'd like to get through them and let everybody get on with their day. So with that, sensing no further comments, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to reappoint the two members that have reapplied for this.
I've moved that we appoint Dennis Calora and Christine Mills to the 911 Surcharge Advisory Committee for two-year terms beginning January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Noah Sad, second by Commissioner Rice to appoint Mr. Dennis Calora and Ms. Christine Mills to the 911 Surcharge Committee for a term of January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2025. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Mills, for your continued service to our county, and if Mr. Calora is watching online, thank, thank him also. So we do appreciate you, you doing this and, and your volunteerism to the county. So it's important. Thank you. Okay, item number two, discussion on three appointments to the Douglas County Advisory Board to manage wildlife for three-year terms beginning January 1st, 2024, through December 31, 2026, and the appointment of one member to serve the remaining unexpired term of a member who has resigned December 14th, 2023, through December 31st, 2024, in adherence with Nevada Revised Statutes, NRS 501.260. Ms. Davidson, did you have anything you wish to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. The Advisory Board to Manage Wildlife has three individuals who applied, two of which, Mr. Howell and Mr. Kier, are, have previously served in this capacity, and we thank them for their service, and staff have no issue with them continuing in that capacity if it is the desire of the board. I do note that the three individuals indicated their availability today to speak if you have any questions for them. With that, Mr. Chairman, I turn it back to the Commission for your pleasure.
Very good. Does Mr. Howell or Mr. Kerr, I, I'm always difficult with your last name. Is the J silent?
It's just Carr.
Carr, Carr, that's what I thought, okay, okay. And, and Mr. Xavier. Mr. Howell, do you have anything that you wish to add to this?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carr?
No.
Okay, and Mr. Xavier is, is, okay, okay. So with that.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any questions? Yes.
Mr. Xavier would make the third of the three available appointments, but he's also the only one on the Audit Committee, and you need one there, too. Would it be appropriate to ask him which one he prefers?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask the question.
Sure.
Can any candidate serve on multiple boards?
Ms. Davidson.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager for the record, the Board of County Commissioners created a policy regarding board committees and commission appointments. It is a board policy that states that an individual, no individual should serve on multiple boards. However, this board has made an exception by motion and action of this board to your own policy. Specifically, you have done it with regard to the Wildlife Advisory Board. You have allowed an individual serving in capacity on this board to also serve on other boards on at least one of, one occasion of which I am aware. I am, and also, also water conveyance. And so that's just information. Because you have done that in the past, you would, you do not need or are not required to make that exception. Now it's just for your information and for your consideration.
Well, then I withdraw my question.
Okay, okay. Very good, thank you. With that, we'll go to public comment on this? Okay. Is there any public comment? Once again, I'm going to caution the public, we are discussing the acceptability or unacceptability of these three individuals to serve on this board, Mr. Gibson. Please keep your comments to that.
I haven't personally seen the qualifications of the applicants. I don't know if that's in our packet today, but if so, what page might we find these resumes?
All of this was issued to the public last, what, Ms. Davidson?
Yesterday?
No.
No.
No, this information has been available to the public since.
Last Friday?
Last Thursday of last week, and the applications for these individuals begin on packet page 27. And for the public's information, the board has mentioned that some of them have chosen not to bring their computers today. A binder containing all of this information has been provided, including copies of the applications to each member of the Commission.
Good. So there's no doubt that there's some highly skilled and qualified folks that apply for these opportunities, but it's been very clear to us in the last three years that there is very little input or policy decision that comes out of these subcommittees to the board. And there's supposed to be year-end reports every year, which summarizes the activities of these boards. My suspicion is that these are professional people who are strapped for time, who probably are high-income folks, and really can't devote the kind of quality attention and professionalism to the business of this county that it deserves and that it needs. That's my experience. So again, I'm advocating that you would compensate or provide incentive for these people, because if they're working double, triple time and they're professionals, then they need an extra caveat to provide extra insight and, and extra time and energy to our business, because our business is out of control, and we're headed for a disaster.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Bringing it back to the board. So the question has been raised whether or not these boards make an annual report to this board, and I believe they do, do they not, Ms. Davidson?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I was just messaged by staff some important information right as you asked me that question, so I do have some information I need to share, but may I answer your question if you rephrase it, sir?
Okay. Annually, we do receive reports from our advisory boards.
Correct, yes. We do receive annual reports from each of these boards, committees, and commissions. Yes, sir.
That's what my observation's been over the last years that I've served on the board, so anyways.
Yes, sir. And may I offer some additional information, just a point of clarification for the Commission. Jennifer Davidson, County Manager for the record, as a point of clarification, we do actually have four vacancies. We had an individual who resigned, Mr., I cannot pronounce his last name, JT Chavalier?
Chavalier.
Chavalier, thank you. I, I worked with him in his time with the Town of Genoa, I should, I should know, remember how to pronounce his name. So an individual recently resigned from this committee, which makes the vacancies for this committee total four, not just three. You only have three individual applications to consider. I suspect you will likely be providing staff with direction today to go out and solicit additional applications for that fourth vacancy, or additional vacancies if you do not fill each of the positions today.
Thank you. Okay, we're back to the board, and, and as Ms. Davidson has pointed out, we have three for four positions, one of those being a, a one-year, I believe it is one-year additional appointment for a, from a resignation of Mr. Chavalier. So anyways, if there's any questions of the candidates or any further comments, Ms. Hales, would you like to entertain, I'll entertain a motion, would you like to?
I move that we appoint Paul Howell, Kevin Carr, and Michael Xavier to three, three-year terms on the Advisory Board to Manage Wildlife, and we seek applications for the vacancy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hales, second by Commissioner Noah Sad to appoint Mr. Paul Howell, Mr. Kevin Carr, and Mr. Michael Xavier to the Advisory Board to Manage Wildlife, and to resume our application process in the public for the one, one-year unexpired term, right? So, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so that I don't step on names, is it Xavier or Javier?
Xavier, sir.
Thank you.
I've only known one other in my lifetime, and, and he went by Xavier also, so that's why I took the risk and did that, so, good, okay. Thank you. If no further questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion passes five to zero. Congratulations. There you go, Mr. Howell, Mr. Carr, Mr. Xavier. Okay, we'll go into item number three now, for possible action, discussion on four appointments to the Douglas County Airport Advisory Committee in accordance with Douglas County Code, DCC Chapter 2.58. Each appointment is for a two-year term beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2025. Pursuant to DCC Chapter 2.58, one representative is appointed from the community at large, one from the business community, one from the airport-powered community, and one from the airport-soaring community. Ms. Davidson, anything you wish to add to that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager for the record, as indicated in the agenda item, there are specific specialized qualifications for three of the positions, three of the four appointments that the board is asked to consider today. I would just note that you have three individuals who have previously served in roles on the Airport Advisory Committee. Ms. Virginia Starrett was previously the Business Committee Appointee. Robert Trumbly was previously the Airport Soaring Community Appointee, and Mr. A.J. Ursick was, also served, and I believe he served as the Community at Large or a Community at Large Representative. You have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight individuals who applied for appointment today, and I mentioned three of those eight previously served. Staff have thanked them for their service on this committee and have no concerns regarding their continued ability to serve moving forward if that is the desire of this Commission. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. We will entertain the applicants to add additional to their resumes at the podium for two minutes each, if you wish. The Commissioners will be allowed to ask questions, of course, and then we'll go to public comment, and then after public comment, we'll bring it back. Are there any of the candidates who wish to address us? I guess I'm going to, I should go down in, perhaps in alphabetical order here. So is Mr. Bradford here? Okay, Mr. Bradford's not, okay, and it was indicated that he was not available today, okay. Mr. Chaplin, Chapman, is Mr. Chapman here? You're not required to address us, you're given an opportunity to address us. And it gives us an opportunity to also, if we haven't done so in the past, meet you. Your, your microphone is on. The red light indicates you're good.
My name is Richard Chapman, for the record, but I'm otherwise known as Chappy. And I don't need to make a comment? Just entertain questions?
Oh.
I would like to say one thing, to add to what the questions, the, the application, you know, had me answer, about my vision for the airport, which, which I thought was an interesting, an interesting question, but I, I just want to make it clear that I have ideas for the airport, but, and, and the reason that I've been thinking about this is because I spent quite a bit of time in the last year and a half with some of the issues that we had out there, talking to a lot of people. I referenced the, the neighborhood, the network, social media. I read, I read that every day, and there were moments of quite a bit of activity on that. The positive stuff was when we had the airshows here, and the negative stuff was all about noise abatement. So I got involved in both of those things, but it gives you a flavor for what the, the community wants, and so what I want as a vision is really what the community wants, and I, and I think when we, when we redo the Airport Master Plan, the current one is not really in the direction that, that the community is telling me that they want it to go in. So I really want to be involved in redoing the master plan so we get in alignment with what the users and the community want.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Chapman? Mr. Turkanyan?
No.
No? Okay, Commissioner Hales?
Yes.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you.
What do you see as the role of the Airport Advisory Commission?
Well, I think that right now we have really good, good management in place at the airport, in, in my opinion. I've worked with them quite a bit, and it's, it's actually running very well under the new management, which is, as you all know, is our county employees. And management, to me, is, is, is doing things right, but the, the AAC needs to provide you with leadership direction, which is doing the right things. And so I think it would be our job, and I'm a pretty good facilitator, so I've done that in my, if you look at my resume, I've done that, you know, throughout my whole work-life, is facilitating, getting people together. You get better ideas when, when you include a lot of people, and you get, and I think you'll be a happier board if we do a better job, you know, providing you with what you need to do, your leadership duties of approving and redirecting the right actions for the airport.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, Commissioners?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next up would be Mr. Gardner, Tim Gardner, and in full disclosure, no relationship.
No relationship.
That, that I know of, anyways.
Hello, Tim Gardner here. Just to follow up a little bit on what, what Chappy said, you know, the airport is really on a great track right now, and, you know, it's important that, that we get involved and keep it on that track, you know, the, the goal of, of all of us at the airport is make this the best rural airport in Nevada. We don't, we're not trying to make this another Reno or another, another San Jose. We want to keep the, the culture and the vibrant atmosphere and the safety culture that we've now developed at the, at the airport. And I'll entertain any questions that you have for me about my resume.
Commissioner Turkanyan, any questions for this applicant?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Hales?
Yes, I have two questions. What do you see as the role of the Airport Advisory Committee?
I think the role of the Airport Advisory Committee is really to interact with all of the users at the airport. In my role, I, I'm kind of a jack-of-all-trades at the airport. I'm a pilot, I'm a mechanic, I run a business out there, I'm a flight instructor, I do glider rides, I fly the skydive airplane, I fly glider tow, so I'm interacting with people on a daily basis out there, and it's important that we understand what's going on out there, and we bring that to the attention of airport management, and we bring it to your attention so that you can understand what's going on at the airport. And so it's really the role of the Airport Advisory Committee to keep track of, of what the needs are of the community and to bring it to your attention.
Thank you. My, before I ask my second question, I just have to note, this is in your application, world record holder for highest glider flight at seventy-six thousand feet. I mean, is that impressive? Yeah, right? That is awesome. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I'm honored to be a part of the Pearlland Project, which, you know, some people know about and many don't, but, you know, we, we have the Pearlland Project as hosted at the Mendon Airport, and it's a very important project that's conducting stratospheric, atmospheric research and aeronautical research, and a lot of people don't realize And a lot of people don't realize, but the Minden Airport has become a little bit of a mini Mojave. We have a lot of very interesting research and development projects going out there. Currently, we're working with Airbus on a contrail research project where we're putting a hydrogen combustion engine on a glider that will fly at high altitude early next year. And so we're doing some really exciting things at the airport.
Thank you for that. So my last question is, you have applied for both business, for all of the roles.
Correct.
Which is, sounds like you're well qualified for all the roles. But the one I want to ask about is, there's a position on the Airport Advisory Committee for businesses at the airport, and then a separate one for business at large, meaning it could be a business that is not located at the airport. The bylaws don't explain, or the ordinance doesn't explain what is the goal of having a member of the business community a position there. I'm going to assume that it is to represent the interests of businesses in the county that may have interaction, or the airport might be relevant to their business. And so in light of that, I wondered if you could just comment on what makes you qualified to fill that kind of role?
Well, I do run a small business. It is an aviation business. And in that, you know, throughout that business, you know, I'm interacting with a lot of people in the community. I think it's important that on the AAC, you have somebody who's actually running a business at the airport and understands the complexities of running a business at the airport and trying to bring some income into the airport. Because currently, I don't believe any of the current members are active business owners or aviation business owners.
Additional questions, Mr. Gardner? Okay. Commissioner Tarkanian?
No.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll go to the next one. Miss, and I always pronounce your last name incorrectly, you know, you've never corrected me. I appreciate that. But I believe it's Linda May Hiver. Is that a correct pronunciation?
Linda May Hiver, for the record.
I'm sorry. Haver?
Hiver.
Haver, okay. I know I won't get it right again, so.
Well, good morning, Monmouth County Commissioner's staff and members of the public. I'm presenting, for the record, six letters of recommendation for me to represent the aircraft. Six or seven letters of recommendation for me to represent the power aircraft community on the Airport Advisory Committee. I know I originally applied for the soaring community, but I found that the opening for the powered community was the one that was available. One of the letters is from Larry Cheek, who is the FAA Fast Team Safety Program Manager. One's from Terry LaLonde, a longtime Minden Tahoe airport supporter, tenant and pilot, and Susan Harper, a tenant pilot and a 99. She's sitting right here. I'm very qualified to represent the airport-powered community because I have flown and operated most of the categories of aircraft common to the Minden Tahoe airport. I flew firefighting tankers, corporate jets, turboprops. Experimental was a contract pilot for the Nevada Department of Wildlife and towed gliders. I co-created and ran profitable FAA Part 141 Power Flight School for 18 years, operating and instructing in single and multi-engine Cessnas and Pipers, which are powered aircraft. In my 40 years plus on the airport, I've almost always been in business. The airport needs to be operated as a business. It's a business. If we want an airport to be self-sufficient and an economic asset, it needs to be operated as a profitable business. I believe the airport and the community can benefit from my varied and comprehensive profitable business experience with powered aircraft. I am very well qualified in the general aviation community, dedicated, very hardworking, and passionate about the success of the Minden Tahoe Airport.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Tarkanian, any questions? Miss? Nope. Miss Haver?
No.
Huh? Haver? Haver, okay, Haver.
Yes, sir.
I took French, but I didn't, I didn't do well. Okay? So. I, just in full disclosure, I didn't do well, okay? And grew up in San Diego, so why I took French, I never know. But anyways, one of my youthful mistakes. Commissioners, questions? Mr. Tarkanian doesn't, Ms. Hales?
Hi, welcome. I, for one, find your whole resume fascinating and inspiring. So thank you for being a pioneer for women aviators and a role model for women in our county. I think it's, your experience is remarkable. The question is the same that I'm asking all applicants. What do you see as the role of the Airport Advisory Committee?
Well, the name is the Airport Advisory Committee. So I see the airport, the committee as a group. Instead of people going, everybody going to the commission separately, they come together and determine their mission or whatever they want to portray to the commission as a group, rather than people going individually on certain issues, whatever the issues happen to be, important issues, not, you know, most important issues. Anybody else?
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you. And now we'll, Mr. Reese?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Benjamin Reese, Peter Reese, however you want to call me. I'm here to not toot my own horn. I'm here to compliment the airport and the B.O.C.C. for making these decisions that have given us our airport back, and I played a role in that. So sometimes the best qualified people should go forward if your vision for the airport is really its best operation. So I'm here to promote a couple of people on behalf of my own experience with them. Robert Trumbly, a good pilot and a business owner, and also serving on the AAC. Richard Chapman, who you heard from earlier, US naval aviator, and also worked very well with the East Fork Fire District in helping us resolve problems with the hangars and stuff like that. Tim Gardner, you've already talked to, and he's imminently qualified to be an AAC member. And A.J. Ursick, who's already served. I would put all of these people ahead of myself. If I left out any names that should be ahead of me, I think that should matter to you. So with that, I can answer any questions you might have. But after you've given these people a shot, you should consider me.
I was going to observe that you're pretty much talking yourself out of the position. Just an observation.
It's not an ego thing to be selected to the AAC. It's a matter of who's really qualified.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Tarkanian, any questions of the candidate?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Hales?
I just want to say thanks.
Okay. Commissioner? Okay. Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Reese. And I understand Ms. Sterrett is not available to attend today. I believe she's in Europe, if I'm not mistaken. And Mr. Trumbly, is Mr. Trumbly here?
Robert Trumbly. Just want to say thank you guys for dedicated service. You guys always do, and we really appreciate it. It's unsung. Thank you. I just want to say I've been honored to spend a little bit of time on the AAC, not a long time, but I feel like that we've made some small hurdles. I want to appreciate you guys listening to us patiently. I know it seems like a lot of noise sometimes. The airport is, I think, one of our largest assets, if not the largest asset of our county, and is extremely important that it is self-sufficient. But I also firmly believe that we need to listen to the owners of this airport, which is the everyday person, and what they're looking for. Because generally, if we help you make decisions and they're the wrong decisions, we don't get the backlash. You guys do. So it's important that you get the critical information, and we need to get that from the community. And I don't see that a lot, always people reaching out to the community for this information. I think that's really critical. And as Chappy said, social media is a great way to glean some of that, but it doesn't replace pressing the flesh and getting to know our neighbors that pay, you know, they pay for this airport, you know? And that's the bottom line, really, I think, is our, your constituents. Hopefully mine, too, if I'm an advisor, if you pick me again. And I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity before and hopefully again.
Thank you, and thank, I know that Commissioner Hales will say this, but I'll say it also. Thank you for your service this last partial year. So we appreciate you stepping in and filling that hole.
My pleasure.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Trumbly? Commissioner Tarkanian?
No.
Okay. Hales, Commissioner Hales?
Yes. You've written some in your application, and now you mentioned the role of the AAC. Is there anything else you'd like to add as what you see as the role of the AAC?
Well, it's a pretty diverse role when you talk about aviation, and having someone that's connected with it, I think, is real important, but also connected with the community, too. I think both of those are important, and no matter what the aspect is, whether it's for me applying for soaring, you know, part of soaring is all the families involved with the people that fly. They're all real important, too, that we make an area, and we think about those, the wives and the children, that the pilots that fly in day-to-day, things like that. And those are important.
Can we also insert husbands in that?
Say it again?
Pardon me?
The wives and the husbands of the pilots.
Yeah, both ways.
Yeah, thanks.
It goes both ways. The family, you know? Yeah, and the families are critical. Thanks for helping me there, Ms. Hales. It's critical that we get that input from the pilots and their family members, so we can make this a vibrant community, not just for people that make money on the airport, but also the people that come and spend money on the airport. We got to make that connection and be open to that. We want to get a write-up in AOP magazine that reflects how wonderful and spectacular our airport is, and people are like, wow, not only do I get to go to Tahoe, I get to enjoy this wonderful airport that I land at, too, right below it, that looks at that beautiful jewel. So I think those are critical things that we all, try not to be too myopic about this incredible vehicle we have, the airport.
I just, a follow-up. I know you own a business, or are part owner, at least, of a business. And you've mentioned being connected to business in the community, but I see that you applied for the soaring position only and not the business position.
Well, I've been a soaring pilot since I was about 22, and that has defined my life. I always looked at business as a way for me to be able to fly. It was a tool to be able to do what I love to do, the passionate thing that I really care about. And this airport, we call it a diamond mine in the soaring community. This is a diamond mine. We have a few diamond mines across the planet, not a lot of them. A diamond is a 1,000-kilometer flight. It's a really difficult flight. I haven't done one myself. I've only got to 800 kilometers myself. But it is why people come here, and that needs to be looked at and, I'll say, advertised to a certain degree, but make people understand how inviting it is and how we are here to help them achieve their goals at our airport, not to get in their way. That's really important. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Nozad, Commissioner Rice? Okay. And no comments from me, or no questions from me. Thank you very much, once again.
And thanks again for all you guys do.
And lastly, but not leastly, Mr. Ursick?
G'day, everyone. My name is A.J. Ursick. Presently, I'm the Vice Chairman of your Minden Airport Advisory Committee. We've come through a difficult period. The restructuring has resulted in the addition of members who share a common objective, a vision of the airport, of being inviting, an inviting culture, one that is responsive to the community and represents a healthy cross-section of aviation activities and interests. The committee has gained meaningful momentum. I am desirous of remaining a member of this AAC. Now is not the time to interrupt this momentum established by the committee. At this juncture, I believe it's critical to staff the committee with citizens who share the objectives I've listed above. Those who spend significant time at the airport have their finger on the pulse of the tenants. At restructuring of the committee, we immediately made modifications which improved services to the committee. We increased the frequency of our meetings from four per year to monthly. We return to meeting in this chamber at an hour that allows anyone to participate. We arrange for the personal participation of Mr. Ritchie, which we have benefited from several times, both as a deputy district attorney and a private citizen. He has been a resource in regarding the areas of responsibility and procedures of our committee. I caution the commissioners against appointing those who have demonstrated a propensity for only procedure or a focused, single-issue agenda. These can be detrimental to the cumulative constructive forward movement of your Airport Advisory Committee. Questions?
Thank you. Question by the Commissioners? Commissioner Tarkanian?
No.
Commissioner Hales?
You can guess what they are. The first question is, what do you see as the role of the AAC? And my second question is, you applied for the business role, and what connection do you have to business in the community that you could bring to the AAC?
I didn't realize I applied for the business.
I believe he applied for all the positions.
Right, right. But if he were to be appointed in the business role, that would be my question.
What's your first question?
What do you see as the role of the AAC?
Well, I thought I had three minutes, and so I was cut to two. So what I was going to, what I cut out of my statement was, since my initial appointment to the AAC, only recently has it been clearly understood that one responsibility of the committee is to assist the commissioners in clarifying, clarification of issues related to aviation and the airport. We are a buffer for you. You can't know everything. That's why you have over 20 advisory committees. And it is our role to keep from you meaningless issues that go nowhere. We need to filter them ahead of time. And it's always been my objective that you only hear something that is substantive, data, research, something that's founded in fact, before anything comes to you that's frivolous. And so it's our job to look out for the major issues of the airport, develop the rules and regulations that are meaningful, which we're doing now, and also the Airport Master Plan, also, that is meaningful and has a real bearing on, in connection with the community. The important thing between the airport is, it is the major asset of the county, and our goal is to make this airport the best rural airport in the state, and we have the people to do it. And it takes time, but we need to get away from individuals with single-issue agendas and those that are propensity for just procedures, and that takes up, wastes a seat, I think, on the committee. Your second one was, I didn't realize that I, I don't think I applied for a specific position. I want to maintain the one I have, and...
So there are four positions? So there are four positions available, and you applied for all of them.
Whatever you think's best.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ursick. Okay, so anyways, we'll now go out to, did any other commissioners have questions? I should have. Okay. Thank you.
I do have a...
Well, let's, you can disclose after we go to public comment, because I have a disclosure also. So at this time, we'll accept public comment.
I'd like to have a clarification on two of the categories. Commissioner Hales mentioned community at large and the business community, and said that the business community category meant you had to have a business at the airport. I believe that's what you said. If it isn't, I'd like that clarified. Then on community at large, my understanding was, anybody could apply for that. Pilot, non-pilot, non-business, just anybody, for instance, like me. So would you please clarify those two categories, so it's clear to not only me, but public? Thanks.
We'll do that after we hear public comment. Yeah, thank you. That's an important distinction.
I attended probably one of the most important meetings of the Airport Advisory Committee, and that was when the decision was made to bring management of the airport back into the county. There had been several meetings on that, but this was the one just before you all voted to do that. I want to highly recommend A.J. for the position. I watched in that meeting the questions that were being asked, and I forget the individual's name, but the person that wanted to come in and manage the airport. A.J. really asked some very pertinent questions that brought out, I think, the vote against bringing them in to manage the airport. He didn't back down. He stayed on point, and he got the answers that he needed to get to make the decisions. And I think the whole board gained a lot from that. And I think when that decision came up to you folks, there was some good information that was given to you. The vote was seven to zero, or whatever number was on that committee, to not recommend this, but to bring it in-house. And I think that A.J. was one of the main individuals that brought that to fruition. And I highly recommend him to stay on that commission. The people in the community know of A.J. They know of his persistence on matters. I've worked with him on a couple of things, and I can't recommend him any more highly than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted briefly to talk for Virginia Sterrett, who's in London and was not able to be here today. I've known her for a number of years. She does have a passion for the airport, and I know she'd be honored to continue in her position. Thank you.
My name is Roger Harker, and I stand up here to express my support for Richard Chapman as a member of the Airport Advisory Committee. I've known Richard for many years. I've flown with him. I've owned airplanes with him. And he is, I don't know anybody in this room is more committed to the success of the Douglas County Airport out here. In terms of qualifications, from the standpoint of being able to facilitate, I have watched him do that, and also the issue of working and establishing a vision, which is so critical to moving forward out here, and he has the experience and the tools to do that. As an aside of being committed, I know no more commitment than building and flying your own airplane, and he has done that, and he flies it daily. I don't think anybody is more current in the activities of the airport than he is. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Been attending these board meetings for three years. Like to know where the year-end report is for this particular committee. Thank you. We looked for that last year. There was none that we're aware of. We're fairly astute with our website and where to find things, so if you would please make it known where we can find the year-end reports for the 22 committees that are supposed to be serving the norms and procedures of the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Additional public comment?
My name is Howard Charney, and I'm a resident of the county, as well as a member of the general aviation community. You're presented with a number of candidates who appear to be qualified, but my comments specifically relate to Linda May Hivert. I've known her for about, I think, 15 years. I don't really keep track, but I'd like to correct something that appeared earlier articulated. Linda May served on the AAC some years ago for two terms with distinction, and that wasn't mentioned, but she knows what this is about. I have to tell you that Linda May is a paragon of professionalism, competence, and integrity. She is an FAA flight instructor, as well as a certified flight instructor for instrument rating, which is, this is complicated stuff. She's been integral to the planning for the development of the East Side. She's been instrumental at the Sports Aviation Foundation, which is a big deal, and this forum, it's not appropriate to go into the details, but that's a big deal. So the airport's complicated. I realize that, and there are all these different competing constituencies. There's the pilots, the businesses, the county, the community at large, and the beloved FAA. And sometimes, these constituencies are loggerheads with one another, and sometimes they're aligned. But Linda May understands these constituencies and their interactions. She's very familiar with the day-to-day operational issues of the airport, as well as the long-range issues which are manifest in the master plan. So I leave you with two final thoughts. One is, if Linda May wants to do this, sit on the AAC again, and she does, I think the county would be foolish not to let her do that. The county and all of those constituencies that I referenced need people that are serving on the AAC who are not learning on the job, and Linda May is not learning on the job. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Am I allowed to speak if I'm not speaking about myself?
Yes, if you wish to advocate on behalf of another candidate.
All right, so, thank you. So I want to tell you a little quick story. When I announced that I was going to run for the AAC, one person in front of other witnesses said, I'm going to go home and pray that you don't get selected. And I thought about that for a second, and I said, wow, I didn't know you prayed. I encourage prayer, but that one might be misguided. However, I went home and I got the link to the AAC selection application, and I posted it on our website for everybody to get, and I continued to do that over several times, so I would encourage people. And I told that story in our group, that I was prayed, there was a prayer that I didn't get selected. There are other people that have been brought before you, that there are prayers they don't get selected. So I would ask you to listen to your inner voice and choose those people that have been involved in what's going on and currently the success our airport has. And I gave you a list, Bob Trumbly, Richard Chapman, Tim Gardner, and A.J. Ursick, ahead of myself. Thank you again.
Thank you. Always have to appreciate a little humor in these meetings, right? So anyways, sometimes it gets a little bit too heavy. Okay, so any additional public comment? Since you know additional public comment, I know there was a question regards to the posting. Is there, do we have any answers to that?
I said that, so if I could clarify. Mr. Ainsworth's question was about, I apologize for being confusing. So there are seven members on the AAC. One is from the airport commercial community, meaning involved in a business at the airport. Another is from SOARING. Another is from PAWLED. And then there are two members that are to represent the business community. So the ordinance doesn't describe what that means, but since the other category is for a business, a commercial, someone from the airport commercial community, I assume it means from the business community in Douglas County. And so there would be two positions in that category, and then two positions in the community at large. Does that clarify?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Davidson, did you have anything you wished to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was additional question by a member of the public regarding the annual report of the Airport Advisory Committee and the date of the board meeting in which it had been submitted and accepted by the county commission. That report was submitted to the county commission for review and acceptance on March 2 of this year, and is, begins on packet page 213 of that agenda packet. I appreciate the question by the member of the public, and we'll have a conversation with staff about how we can make these annual reports a little bit easier to find. In addition, on that date, the reports, because I suspect it may be a follow-up question, the reports for the advisory boards, for the 911 Surcharge Committee Advisory Board to Manage Wildlife, the Airport Advisory Committee, the Audit Committee, the Board of Equalization, the Law Library, the Library Board of Trustees, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Regional Transportation Commission, Senior Services and Public Transit Advisory Board, Debt Management Commission, Water Convenance Advisory Board, and the Planning Commission were all accepted on that same date. That section of the agenda begins on packet page 210.
Thank you. Okay, and so bringing it back to the board, as Commissioner Rice indicated, and I have a disclosure to make also, I just want to make sure the public understands that Ms. Sterrett, Virginia Sterrett, did serve on, was a member of my campaign team four years ago, so I need to make that disclosure. Commissioner Rice, did you have a disclosure also?
I do. I have two disclosures. Number one, Virginia Sterrett, I have served on the Douglas County Republican Central Committee for over 30 years, and I have known her for the bulk of that time. And Michael Bradford, I have served on several commissions and boards with him. He is the former owner of the Lakeside Inn. Unfortunately, it's now a hole in the ground, preparing to morph into a hospital on the Nevada side at the lake. Bravo. And I just wanted to say that I have known Mr. Bradford for a good number of years, and I highly recommend him, but my association with him has professionally ended after he left the board of the Douglas County Lake Tahoe Sewer Authority, and I haven't worked with him since. Thank you.
Okay, so before I entertain a motion, I think it would be appropriate for each commissioner to see if we can build some consensus here. We have eight candidates for four positions, so I will ask each commissioner to articulate their thoughts, and then we'll see if we have a consensus that could entertain a motion. So Commissioner Tarkanian, to you, would you like to let us know what your thoughts are here, what your direction is?
Sure, sure. You know, I've done this now with my third or fourth time, and I don't think I've ever had a more qualified group of people apply for these positions, and even though there's four of them, I'm stuck on having at least five that I would, I feel very strongly about. Michael Bradford, Ms. Hivert, Ginger Sterrett, Mr. Trumbly, and Mr. Ursick. Those of there is five of the four, and I think those five fit in the four categories.
Okay, so you indicated, I'm sorry, Ms. Sterrett, Mr. Trumbly, and who else?
Mr. Ursick.
Mr. Ursick, and?
Ms. Hivert.
Hivert.
Hivert, thank you.
Did I get that right? Hivert. Okay, okay, okay. And so as you're articulating this...
And Mr. Bradford.
What particular position? So basically, you've identified Ms. Sterrett, Trumbly, and Ursick. One, two, three, four, five, yeah. So you would, as I gather, you would leave Ms. Sterrett in her position, Mr. Trumbly in his, Mr. Ursick in his, and then Michael Bradford or Ms. Hivert?
It looks like the, I'm sorry, it looks like the airport-powered community is the only spot open. And I like Mr. Bradford a lot. I see Ms., and I'm not going to pronounce her name correctly again.
Hivert.
At so many different meetings of these, and it's cared so much about the Airport Advisory Committee, I need both to do a wonderful job.
Okay. And who wants to go next? Ms. Hales?
I've done a lot of contemplating on what to do about this, and spoken to a number of people, and read the applications carefully, and take this responsibility seriously. I want to talk first to Linda May Hivert, who is a standout, who has more recommendations than anyone else combined, whose career in aviation is unparalleled. If you are appointed to the AAC, your voice is one of seven. Right now, Linda May Hivert serves as the champion for the airport for Douglas County Economic Vitality. And in that role, your voice is one of one. And I see that role having more ability to move things forward in the coming years, coming months and years, because the Airport Master Plan is going to be updated, and we have, in part of my preparation, I spoke with Nikki Rudelbach. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Our fairly new Economic Vitality manager. And she and I spoke about what could the airport champion do in the coming months and years, and we have a vision to where that position can do more than has happened in the past because of the updated master plan, and because she is committed to providing support for this role. And as I look at this, there are grant opportunities, potentially business opportunities, potentially lifestyle, marketing opportunities... lifestyle, marketing opportunities, that are not being fully taken advantage of in our community. And so when I compare what Linda May Hiver can do on the AAC versus what she can do as the champion, I believe there's more opportunity for getting things done as the Economic Vitality champion. And I don't think that both jobs would be compatible for one person to hold both positions. And for that reason, I fully support Linda May Hiver as the economic champion. Coming back to then who would be, who I would support for AAC, I would support Mr. Trumbly for SOARING. I would support Mr. Ursick for at-large. I believe Mr. Bradford is an incredible applicant, but I sense that if there are others willing and able to serve, he would be happy to give way to them. And I sense that both from conversations with people and from a line in his application that says something like, "If there are people that live closer to the airport, they should be appointed before me." So for that reason, I would probably not do Mr. Bradford for POWERED, but instead I would do Mr. Chapman, Chappy. And that leaves business. I think it's important that the person appointed to the business role have some connection with the business community in Douglas County. And Mr. Gardner has talked about how although his business is at the airport, he is connected with the business community in Douglas County, and I think that's important. I think that that is lacking in the business appointee that is currently holding that position. And I think that also the person holding that position doesn't have a lot of other connections with the airport right now. And for that reason, I would support Mr. Gardner for the, for the business position.
The business community?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you for allowing me all that time.
Just trying to get, navigate this thing, okay. Who would like to go next? Okay, Mr. Noah Sad.
I will not go into detail on the people that I selected, but let it be known that I did a lot of homework at home on this, so, anyway. My choices are for airport-powered community, Mr. Chapman. For the SOARING community, Mr. Trumbly. For business, Ms. Darrett. And for at-large, Albert Urick. Let me say one thing about business. I reckon that there has to be somebody on that board who's familiar with business dealings, not necessarily with outside the AAC, but if something comes up like, "We need to buy a dozen such," or "We need to, we'll get a lawsuit going," the person that you need right now is Virginia Darrett.
Okay, Mr. Rice?
I will go alphabetically. Enough has been said about who qualifies for what, so I'm not going to go into all that. My choices are Michael Bradford, Tim Gardner, Robert Trumbly, and Robert Ursick. Thank you.
Oops, I didn't turn my, so I tend to not entertain the replacement of members who are on current boards and serving in a good, in a good manner, attending the meetings and bringing forth good information to those boards. So I would concur with Mr. Ursick in regards to the community at large. Mr. Trumbly is a new appointment to the SOARING committee and community, and I believe he's doing, from what I understand, doing a very good job at that. And I'm not inclined to, I don't see any reasons to replace Ms. Darrett from that board, so that would be my choice for business community, which brings me down to the choices of the powered community. And what's interesting here is when I look at my spreadsheet, that leaves two votes for Mr. Bradford and two votes for Mr. Gardner, no, and two votes, I believe, Mr. Noah Sad, you said, Mr. Chapman also, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we have two votes for Mr. Bradford, two votes for Mr. Chapman, and two votes for Mr. Gardner for the powered community. And wow, that's, it's a, it's a tough choice there. Okay, I think I would, once again, I guess I would, and once again, in full disclosure, we have no relationship, so I would, I would go ahead and go with Mr. Gardner, Tim Gardner. And so I think that, I think that would give us our four members, if I'm not mistaken, with the number, required number of, a minimum amount of votes of three commissioners. Right?
Could you just say again which position you have?
Okay, so I have A.J. Ursick for community at large, which is his current position. I concur with keeping Mr. Trumbly on with the SOARING community. I concur with keeping Ms. Darrett on with the, with the business community, and I would add Mr. Tim Gardner as the powered community.
Well?
Oh, oh, I see where you went. You went with Mr. Gardner in the business community versus the powered community. Okay, so that means that Mr. Gardner, Mr. Rice, what was your selection? Did you, okay, okay, so you selected him also for the business community? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so that means that we have, okay, okay, so we have two votes for powered community with Mr. Tarkanian and Mr. Rice, and we have two votes for the powered community with Ms. Hail, Commissioner Hales, and Commissioner Noah Sad, so, and we have three votes for the business community on Ms. Darrett. So therefore, my choices then have to come down to Mr. Bradford or Mr. Chapman for the, for the powered community to give the required three votes. That's what I'm seeing now.
May I make a suggestion that we take multiple motions? Because it just?
I see us having, I, okay, if, and I was, and I was looking at Mr. Chapman for the powered community, so I would change my vote there. That would give Mr. Chapman three votes for the powered community, that would still give Ms. Darrett three votes for the business community, Mr. Trumbly five votes for the SOARING community, and Mr. Ursick five votes for the community at large. So I don't particularly see a need to separate these. Entertain a motion?
So I just want to clarify that you are, that this board, what we would essentially be doing is putting Ms. Darrett ahead of Tim Gardner?
I don't see any reason, my personal feelings is that I don't see any reason to, she served well in that position on the advisory board. I hear good things from the other members of the advisory board as well as staff, and so I see no reason to change that position.
Except members of the advisory board today urged you not to.
Well, my personal feelings, so I think she's done a good job, and I see no reason to remove her.
She is not as well-connected. She doesn't have a business that has any relevance to the airport.
And I will state again that the person that's sitting in the board who is aligned with the business, business in general, not business to the community, it may include that, but there's far more other cases that the AAC would address that you need to have somebody who is trained and has understood how business works, and what you have to do as a board in order to accomplish a business objective.
I would like to move that we appoint Mr. Trumbly to the SOARING position and Mr. Ursick to the at-large position.
Do I hear a second?
I have no idea what we're doing, but I'll say it.
Okay, so what, so what, Ms., so what Commissioner Hales has recommended is that we go ahead and appoint two positions, the SOARING community and the community at large, and then come back to the powered community and the business community.
The reason I did that is because we have unanimous support for Trumbly and Ursick, and I want to vote for them.
Okay.
You know, I just don't see, I just don't see why we're prolonging this if everyone's giving their opinion, the votes. Do we think we're going to change the other two votes by separating two of the four?
I would appreciate the privilege to vote yes for those I support and no for those I don't.
I think you still, okay.
And did you?
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying there, okay? I understand, so. Commissioner Noah Sad, you had something to add?
Yeah. And as I read, as I started checking off the positions, you had already voted, you had, you said this, and this, and this, and this. Now you want to change it because of the title of the vote?
No, I said Trumbly and Ursick from the beginning. All of us did.
All right, then what is your issue?
I don't have an issue with them. I would like to vote for them.
And did you already do that?
Well, we haven't voted yet.
I understand, I understand the nuance here, okay? I understand the nuance, so anyways, all those, so I'll call for the vote on that, okay? All those in favor of appointing Mr. Trumbly to the SOARING community position on the Airport Advisory Committee, and Mr. Ursick to the community at-large position on the Airport Advisory Committee, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, so that motion passes five to zero. Now we have two positions left to fill. We have the powered community, of which we have, and we have the business community. We have had two folks express their support of Mr. Bradford for the powered community. We have two people that have, we have two people that indicated a preference for Mr. Bradford, three people that indicated a preference for Mr. Richard Chapman, so why don't we do that one next? Okay, and then we can go into the business community. Is that, is that good?
With reference to your first case, you're saying that you are, you're going to give us two choices, Bradford and Chapman?
Those are the two that we have, we, well, we have, okay, so we have two votes for Mr., as I'm, as I'm looking at my notes, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff please, I have two votes for the powered community, Mr. Tarkanian and Mr. Rice for Mr. Bradford. I have, for the powered community, I have three votes for Mr. Chapman in regards to Commissioner Hales, Commissioner Noah Sad, and Commissioner Gardner. And then also, I have one vote, Mr. Tarkanian, for Ms. Iver for the powered community. Those are the three choices that I see for the powered community, right? Am I, am I right on that? So I'll entertain a motion to identify one of those folks to, to select.
I'll jump into the fray. I move that we appoint Michael Bradford from the powered community.
There's no sense in seconding it if they are, if they have the votes. I mean, I gave, I'm not sure what we're doing here. If you want my top priority, I'll second it, but you've already said there's three against us, and if the three are on the other side, then I'll vote with the other three if they feel that's more appropriate.
I didn't hear a second, did, okay, did you want to second that, or did you just want to let that go and we can entertain a motion for somebody else?
I think I would let it go and entertain the motion for the person who has three votes.
Okay.
Oh, I'll second Michael Bradford.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, seconded by Commissioner Hales, to select Michael Bradford to the powered community selection. So all those, any discussion on those, on that, on the selection of Michael Bradford?
Gosh. I wonder why we went for consensus and now we don't want to listen to our consensus?
Good question.
That says three for Chapman, three for Virginia Darrett, five for Trumbly, and five for Ursick. What is the problem here?
Okay, so I take it your vote would be no?
So I would like to ask Commissioner Rice if he's had a conversation with Mr. Bradford about this.
Not recently. I have on several occasions had meetings with him at the airport over breakfast. We were not at the same table, but I know that he has a very deep interest in the airport. He flies out of there regularly, and I've seen his expertise at dealing with different boards, and even though the Lakeside is no longer there, he did a marvelous job as the chief administrator for the Lakeside Inn, and I have great confidence in his ability to serve on this board.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of Mr. Bradford for the powered community signify by saying aye.
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 No.
Okay, those against? Well, I mean, there's three votes, so, so I originally wanted Mr. Chapman, but I think, I think it's outweighed here, three to, three to two.
I fail to understand. I fail to understand the logic of getting a consensus, and three people on this board voted for Mr. Chapman, three people on this board voted for Ms. Darrett, five for Trumbly, and five for Ursick. What could be more?
Commissioner, I believe what we were doing was giving our opinion of the different candidates. I did not see that as a vote. I think that the final vote that we just took is what should stand.
I think there was some questions, I think there was some questions in the commissioners' minds in regards to that position, that we found a number of people that were acceptable, but our initial choices were what we voiced. That doesn't necessarily restrict us from changing our mind.
I'm going to throw my two bits out if you don't mind.
Sure.
I have no problem with going with the route you guys just said. I like Mr. Bradford, and he was my initial choice. The problem I have is what I think Commissioner Noah Sad's alluding to is, we've done this on numerous occasions where we gave our opinion and who we wanted to vote for, you tallied them up, and then whoever had the most votes during that, they moved, they were appointed. We never did a new one. This is the first time we've done this.
Ma'am?
Okay. Commissioner Noah, you?
I believe it's important for us to talk to each other and benefit from what we're thinking, and keep an open mind until we discuss, and this process allowed for that, and I appreciate that.
Well, we had an opportunity to discuss before we gave our opinions. Well, we had an opportunity to discuss before we gave our opinions.
Okay, well, I still count and now, you know, and I, I will go with the majority then and, and appoint Michael Bradford to, it's a four to one vote. And I appreciate your negative vote on that, your dissenting vote on that, Commissioner Noasad, that's certainly respected. Okay, I don't want you to think that it was not respected. So, okay. And so we have one additional position to fill on the board, and that is the business community, and I'll entertain a motion. We have three votes, three people who have expressed their feelings regarding the appointment of Virginia Sterrett, and we have two people who have expressed an interest in Mr. Gardner for the business community. So based on the fact that we have three votes for Ms. Sterrett, I will entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Sterrett as the business community representative on that board.
Did you make a motion?
I am entertaining a motion.
I make a motion that we accept Virginia Sterrett as the business representative.
Do I have?
And I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Noasad, a seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian to appoint Ms. Sterrett as the business community representative on the airport advisory committee. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, so I hear four, 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 four for the appointment and, and a one dissent with Ms. Hales dissenting. So, okay, so we've gone through that then. I, I think that's where, we filled all four positions. So am I correct? Okay, so let me articulate that again and congratulate those individuals. Mr. Ursick, congratulations for remaining on that board and for your time that you've put on there. Mr. Tremblay, now you have a full two-year term, right? So thank you. Ms. Sterrett will remain on as the business community, and Mr. Bradford will go to the powered community. So with that, that completes our appointments to the airport advisory committee, and it's 10 till noon. Am I reading? Is that really where we are?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna take a break until noon. Okay, and we'll come back.
Okay, it's noon. Out of respect for the public that has...
Recording in progress.
So, out of respect for the members of the public who have come to apply for these boards, rather than take a break for lunch today, we're going to try to power through this without doing that, so that they can get on to the rest of their days as well. So with that, we'll go into item number... Where are we at? We're at number four, okay? For possible action discussion on one appointment to the Audit Committee to fill a vacancy due to the resignation of a member to serve the remaining unexpired term of December 14, 2023 through December 31, 2025. We have one individual that applied for this, for the Audit Committee. However, that individual has been selected also already for the Advisory Board to manage wildlife. We needed four selections there. We only have three. So, we're going to have to go out back to the public for the appointment of an additional person to the Advisory Board to manage wildlife. And our board policy has been to only have one person serving in one capacity on our Advisory Board. So unless there is a strong desire, I would suggest that we also add the Audit Committee and go back out to the public for additional applicants. Is there any objections of the board to that idea?
No.
Okay. So I guess I need to have a... This is for possible action, so I need to... I hope Mr. Xavier understands that. Okay. So at this time, we will go out... Because we listed it as possible action, we will entertain public comment on this. Is there any public comment in regards to Mr. Xavier? He's already been appointed to one, but is there any public comment?
Yes, I'd just like to thank you for your application, sir, and notate that according to County Manager Jennifer Davidson, the year-end Boards, Norms and Procedures reports for 2022 were provided in March of 2023. She cited Page 213 and Page 210. The reason why those reports weren't provided in December the previous year is because I spurred the Board into providing those reports. I brought that forward. This is a form of damage control. That's all it is. You won't find those year-end reports for the previous years of 2021 and 2022. I'd be willing to bet. So what that's called is maladministration. It's a form of damage control to give the public the illusion that these norms and procedures are actually serving the best interests of Douglas County.
Is there any additional public comment? Since there's none, then I'll bring it back to the Board, and I will entertain a motion to go back out to the public domain to try to gather additional applicants for the Audit Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hale, seconded by Commissioner Noasad to solicit additional candidates for the Audit Committee in the public to be brought back in December, right? I mean, January, right? Okay. And I don't know if Mr... Has Mr. Turkanyan rejoined us? No, okay. I know he had some questions as to whether or not we were going to take a 10-minute break or go to lunch, but anyways, we'll try to get him back online. Anyways, all those in favor of that activity, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. So we have a four to zero vote on that one. Okay. So we'll go back out to the community for additional applicants, Ms. Johnson, for the Audit Committee. We'll go to the next item is... Okay, read this in the record. Item number five for possible action. Discussion on the nomination of two persons to the Douglas County Board of Equalization, BOE, by Chairman Mark Gardner and their confirmation by a vote of the Board of County Commissioners for four-year terms of office beginning January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2027. Chairman Gardner may select one member of the Board of Equalization to serve as the Board of Equalization, BOE Chairperson from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2025 pursuant to NRS 361.340, Subparagraph 4. Ms. Davidson, do you have anything to add?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager for the Record. The Board of Equalization has some unique requirements stated in NRS 361.340, which I will read into the record. The Chairman plays a unique role in this process to select these applicants, and the statute specifically states in Section 4 that the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners shall nominate persons to serve on the County Board of Equalization who are sufficiently experienced in business generally to be able to bring knowledge and sound judgment to the deliberations of the Board or who are elected public officers. The nominees must then be appointed upon a majority vote of the Board of County Commissioners. The Chair shall then... Of the Board of County Commission shall then designate one of the appointees to serve as the Chair of the County Board of Equalization. So for clarification, members of the Commission, it is the Chair's role today to nominate individuals for your consideration. We have two individuals who have applied for two positions, Ms. Pace and Mr. Miller. Both individuals have served previously in this role, and staff have no procedural concerns with their continued service in this position, and we thank them for their service. With that, Mr. Chairman, unless you have any questions, I would turn it back to you.
Okay. Any questions by the Commissioners? We will entertain two minutes from each of these individuals. If they wish to address us, they're not required to. So is there any... Is Ms. Pace here? I don't know her, so I... Okay. And Mr. Miller? You... Nothing to add? Okay. Very good. With that, we'll go to public comment. Is there any public comment on item number five? Two people to serve on our Board of Equalization.
No pen. James McCall, this has been my sixth year on the Board of Equalization. I've worked with both these people, and I am very grateful that they're both reapplying, so we won't be short as we have been in some years. And I would recommend Elaine Pace remain as the Chairman of that Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Okay. Since there's no additional public comment, I'll bring it back to the Board. Since I am the one that is required by NRS to suggest the appointments to the Board, I will recommend a motion to reappoint Ms. Elaine Pace and Mr. Tim Miller to the Board of Equalization for the county of Douglas County. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hale, seconded by Commissioner Rice to reappoint Ms. Pace and Mr. Miller to the Douglas County Board of Equalization for a period of January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2027. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes four to zero. Also, in that regard, as Chairman, it requires me to identify an individual of that Board as Chairperson, and to my understanding, Ms. Pace has served in that position for... And done a very good job for some time. So I don't see any reason to appoint anybody else to that role as Chairman, so I will nominate Elaine... I guess I don't even have to have a vote on that, right? Okay. So it's just a matter of public disclosure, okay? I hereby appoint Elaine Pace as the Chairman of the Board of Equalization for the period of January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2027, as provided for in NRS 361.340, Subparagraph 4.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Noasad.
I think you said January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2027.
That's what you said.
And what is it here? It says 2025, in the minutes.
It's a four-year position, so it would be from 2024 to 2027.
Okay. Can we make a correction to that, please?
Right. Okay. It's in the agenda packet, or in the agenda, but... Okay. Maybe not on the... So maybe that's a typo over there, so... Okay. With that, then, we'll go to... The Board of Equalization's done. We'll go to the Genoa Historic District Commission. And I believe that's what was on... Yes. Okay. Discussion on three appointments to the Genoa Historic District Commission for a two-year term beginning January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2025, in accordance with County Code 2.28. And Ms. Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager for the Record. We have three individuals who have applied for three positions on the Genoa Historic District Commission. Each of the applicants who have applied have served in this role previously. Staff have no procedural reason to object to their continued service and do thank them for their service on this important commission. That is Robert Centani, Margaret Tracy, and Marion Vassar. I'm happy to turn it back over to the Commission for your pleasure.
Thank you. Do we have any of the three individuals here today? I know we had them at the last meeting, but not necessarily... No, no. Okay. None of them are here today. Okay. So with that, we'll dispense with that, and we'll go to public comment. Is there any public comment on the acceptability of any one of the three individuals to serve on this Board?
Dan Ainsworth. I know all three candidates. I like them all. I do ask you, though, to ask them if they'll be receptive to working fairly with the Genoa Town Advisory Board as directed by you already, to work out a solution to have the Town Board be involved in their task now defined by the new county ordinance. So I know this is a topic that's not on the agenda for today, but I would like you to relay that intent and direction to them. It's very important for the town. That's the only reason I'm standing here saying that. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Okay. Since there's no additional public comment, I'll bring it back to the Board. They're not here, so is there any... I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Robert Cantelli...
Centani?
I don't do Italian.
Centani? Okay.
Margaret Tracy and Marion Vassar to the Genoa Historic District Commission.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Noasad to appoint... Reappoint Robert Centani, Margaret Tracy, and Marion Vassar to the Genoa Historic District Commission. Since there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes four to zero. And we will now proceed to item number seven. Discussion on two appointments to the Library Board of Trustees by the Board of County Commissioners for a four-year term beginning January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2027, and the appointment of one member to serve the remaining unexpired term of a member who has resigned January... December 14, 2023 to December 31, 2024. So one-year appointment in adherence with NRS Chapter 379. Ms. Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager for the Record. The Library Board of Trustees has three positions open for your appointment and consideration today and for individuals applying. Of those four individuals, two individuals have served previously in this capacity, and we thank them for their service. Ms. Doughty, I believe is how you pronounce her last name, and Ms. McCall. Staff see no procedural reason for them to continue to serve on this Board if that is the desire of the Board of County Commissioners. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would return it back to you.
Thank you. So we'll entertain two minutes from each of these candidates to state other things that they have put on their resume or ask questions by the Board, and then we'll go to public comment and bring it back to us for a decision. So is Ms. Betcher... Is it Betcher? We're going to go in alphabetical order, so Ms. Betcher.
Good afternoon. My name is Martha Betcher. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with the Board. I've lived in the Carson Valley for 35 years or so. I was born and raised in the Central Valley of California, the oldest daughter of a turkey almond rancher in the nearby small town of Escalon. My mom was a college graduate who loved reading and made sure her kids understood the power of a good library. She started all of us early on checking out books, learning the joy of a good reading in our little library in the town of Escalon. I went on to attend Fresno State University. I graduated with a degree in microbiology and a minor in chemistry. From there, I went on into hospital laboratory work, but eventually decided that I was not cut out for the necessary shift work, and eventually became a middle school science teacher in Carson City at Eagle Valley Middle School for five years. When the school librarian there was set to retire and suggested I might be good for her position, I ultimately ended up returning to UNR to become certified as a school media technician, aka school librarian. Just as a teaching credential wasn't enough training for the state of Nevada. During that time, I worked part-time at our own Douglas County Library here in Minden. Once I became certified to be a school librarian, I was hired at Carson Valley Middle School here in Gardinerville in 2000. I feel lucky to have spent 17 years at the CVMS Library. I retired in 2017. My time at CVMS taught me the power of literature and how it can help all of us create community and work to become our very best selves. I would be honored to serve on our local library Board in this position. I want to offer thanks. I know that Nick, the Eagle Scout that was here, he beat feet and got out of here quite a while ago. But I've worked with the Friends of Library to do their book sales, and I appreciate so much the efforts that he put in to create a place for them to put the books that they're collecting and hauling those books. Let me tell you, it's a huge thing. So it's just great that he's done that. I'm also really excited that we have Director Tim for the programs, that he's been getting out to our community, and I just want to see access continue. I'm excited about the Bookmobile, and I would be thrilled to work on... Work with the other Board members on the library Board. Thank you.
Oh, questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions by the Commissioners? Commissioner Turkanyan, thank you. I guess there was a question there whether or not we were going to take a lunch break, but we're going to try not to. We can get through this.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
You have a little bit easier time because you have a restaurant right behind you, right?
Yeah. I apologize. I got disconnected, though, and I didn't hear what you guys said at the end. But no, I don't have any questions. I just appreciate hearing from another person from the Central Valley.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Hale, any questions? Commissioner Noasad, Rice? Okay. I don't either, so thank you very much. Ms. Doughty is not available today. Do we have Ms. McCall here? We're going in alphabetical order.
Good afternoon. Jermaine Murco for the Record. Happy holidays. It's wonderful to see you all again. I just wanted to let you guys know...
Could you speak closer into the microphone, please?
Oh, yes. Jermaine Murco for the Record. And I just wanted to say that serving on the library Board for this past six months has been extremely rewarding, and it has been an absolute pleasure to work alongside all of our fellow trustees and with our Director Tim, as well as all the staff members at both our Minden and our Zephyr branches. And it would be an absolute pleasure to continue to serve on the library Board. I would love to continue to do so. And Commissioner Hale, I just wanted to let you know that since we last spoke, I have since read the strategic plan cover to cover, and I have to say we've accomplished so much, such as expanding our programs like summer reading and our youth programs and development of new programs. And we've had an increase in our library usage. And to answer your previous question that you asked me at the last meeting, some things that I am looking forward to are expanding and basically renovations at both of our Minden and our Zephyr branches to allow more space for all of those extra programs and resources. And I just wanted to say thank you and happy holidays.
Okay. So Commissioners, do we have any questions of Mr... Ms. Murco?
Yes.
Am I... I've been pronouncing it wrong again, right?
That's okay.
Anyways, Murco. Okay. The W is silent. Okay. Commissioner Turkanyan, any questions for Ms. Murco?
No. No.
Ms. Hale? Commissioner Hale? I think she already answered your questions, right? In advance. Okay. Commissioner Noasad? No? Okay. Me neither. Okay. Thank you. And now, Ms. Olivera. Am I pronouncing that right? Olivera? I think I pronounced it previously in an incorrect manner, but...
Like, yes, you know my name because I've been here before, and I thought about this a little bit. Teresa Olivera, and I have applied for the position previously, and I realized in retrospect that you really have no reason to trust me because I've only lived in this area for two years. So I would like to tell you that in the past two years, as soon as I came into Genoa, I joined the Friends of Genoa, and they informed me about the volunteer regulations in Douglas County. So I went and became a volunteer and was fingerprinted and all that good stuff. And then they told me that in order to handle money, I had to have my financials examined, and I did that. So I am a friend of Genoa, and I have worked at the Candy Dance and the Cowboy Festival and handled money for them. I also, as a very first thing, became a friend of the library and became a lifetime member of the Friend of the Library because I believed that that was an investment that was essential for me. I also served right from the beginning as a member of the Board of Directors of the Friends of the Library. So I put myself out immediately because I want to be part of this community and part of this county. My experience was such that I wanted to support the role of the library. So for those seven years that I worked in the library, I saw the role of the library that I was in. It was a small rural library, but it was key to the community. The community was... Needed wireless support. They needed access to fax machines. They needed more than just books. They needed a center for community relations and socialization, a meeting place. Those were the visions that I had in those seven years that I was on the Board of Trustees. These are the visions that this library and this strategic plan also has. I see that. I've been to library Board meetings. I've been to strategic plan meetings. This is their vision as well. It's a vision that fits my vision. I want to be part of that, and that's why I have kept pursuing this. I think that the library is such a key component. Your airport and all your other things are important, but your library is reaching out to everyone and is a resource for everyone. And a meeting place and a community place, it is the heart to me. The library is the heart of a community, and so I would like to be part of that. I see that Tim and his staff are exemplars in trying to push the strategic plan forward. I think the library Board's role is to support them in pushing it forward and to help them formulate their plans for success. So I hope that you will consider me this time out.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Olivera? Commissioner Turkanyan?
No.
Okay. Very good. Then at this time, we'll go to public comment. Is there any public comment?
Dan Ainsworth, again. Over the last few days, a number of folks in Genoa have come to me and asked why Teresa, who's applied a number of times before, hasn't been selected. I didn't know the answer to that question, so I reviewed her application. She has a great resume. She explained a few things here already, I thought, in a very eloquent way. But let me just add a couple of things here, maybe a couple of repeats. She's a 35-year math teacher. She's been the president of a library Board. She's a life member of the National Education Association. She's got a master's in student personnel services. Does that ring a bell from a community necessity maybe here on a different topic? And of course, she's jumped right into volunteering at Candy Dance and Genoa's Western Heritage Day, so you know I like her for that alone. Looks to me like she's a perfect fit for the Library Board of Trustees.
James McCall. And I'm here to talk for Starla Doty, who couldn't be here. She's on a long-planned trip from months ago with her husband. I believe they're at a rodeo somewhere because that sounds like Starla. She's on the Board currently. She is one of the most reasonable, intelligent women that I know... Person that I know. I don't want to be sexist. I find her a great resource in what I do. She's a former bookstore owner. She loves the library, and she would love to continue in her role. Thank you.
Additional public comment? Okay. Since there's no additional public comment, we'll bring it back to the Board. Do we want to entertain a motion, or do we want to...
First of all, I have a disclosure. I served with Starla Doty on the Douglas County Republican Central Committee. I've known her for a good number of years. I have a great deal of respect for her. She has served as our treasurer, as well as, if I'm correct, our... Yeah. Blank. She has served as our treasurer, as well as, if I'm correct, our, yeah, blank, served as our...
Served in many positions.
Yes. So I need to disclose that and the fact that my knowledge of her has nothing to do with my vote on this topic.
I think we could all fairly well, I think we could all fairly well disclose that we know most of these people on these different applicants. So anyways, okay. Does somebody want to make a motion or express some thoughts?
I'll disclose that I've known Martha Batcher for many years and been a member of a book club with her.
I'm not ready to make a motion. I strongly support the people that have already served on this position. They have done a very good job, in my opinion. And I'm torn between Ms. Batcher and Ms. Olivia, Oliviaera. I'm not good at Spanish either, sorry. So that's my only quandary between the two of them. Number one, why hasn't Ms. Olivera, the lady, been put on boards? However, Martha Batcher has sterling certificates in her experience. So I'm torn between those two, but I'm going to have to go with longevity in the community and go with Ms. Batcher, Doty, and Murcal.
Commissioner Turkanyan, any...
I concur with this speaker that Teresa Olivera would be great for this, and she's applied and has a great background and resume. So I definitely want to vote for her, which I guess puts me at odds with Commissioner Rice. I also liked a lot of what Martha Batcher had to say and her background, but there has been sort of a precedent set by the board that if you like the work that the current board is doing, there's no reason to replace them. So that takes you, I guess that would put me back with Starla and Jermaine. So my three would be Starla, Jermaine, and Teresa.
Does anybody wish to make a motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Starla Doty and Jermaine Murco to serve on the Library Board of Trustees for a four-year term beginning January 1st, 2024 through January 30, or December 31st, 2027, as presented. And secondly, to appoint Teresa Olivera to the Library Board to serve the remaining unexpired term of Kimberly Esti from December 14th, 2023 through December 31st of 2024.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion?
Go ahead.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to appoint, reappoint Starla Doty and Jermaine Murco to two four-year terms, beginning in January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2027. And is that correct? 2027? December 31st, 2027? Okay. And, oh, that's a four-year term. Okay. And then also to select Ms. Olivera to the unexpired term, beginning 20, what is that unexpired term? December 14th, 2023 through December 31st, 2024. Discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes five to zero. Ms. Batcher, thank you very much for your interest in that, and we certainly appreciate your activities in our county. And there you go, Ms. Olivera.
And we know that repeated applications work, so...
And as I've identified, I think we're going to have some positions available in other boards, so, right? Shuffling papers here. Getting down to the last few. Okay. Item number eight, discussion on three appointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a two-year term, beginning January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2025. Two representatives are appointed from the Carson Valley and one representative is appointed from the Tahoe Township. Ms. Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. As you noted, Mr. Chairman, you have three vacancies to consider, two for the Carson Valley, one for the Tahoe Township, and four applicants. I would note that three of the applicants have previously served as members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. That is Gary Dove, Deborah Lang, and Sharice Smith. Staff see no procedural reason why they cannot continue in that capacity moving forward, and we thank them for their service. With that, Mr. Chairman, I turn it back to you.
Okay. So my observation would be here that Mr. Xavier has also applied for this board. However, he has already been assigned to the Advisory Board on Wildlife. So that would leave us, based on previous policies, leave us with three appointments for three positions. Anybody else have anything they wish to add in that regard? If not, then if we're good, I don't know, do we need to hear from those three? Does any one of those three wish to add anything?
I was Chairman Gardner, Gary Dove for the record. And Commissioners, I was prepared to talk a little bit more, but since you wanted a little bit of humor and you brought up the Eagle Scout and Eagles specifically, I just want to let you know, once a dove is always a dove.
And I hate gardening.
Deborah Lang for the record. And I want to say something because of the season, tis the season, and it's the season of giving. And in that spirit, I want to say that time is the most precious thing anyone can give. And I want to thank Mr. Chair and the board and the citizens and everyone that was interested in serving for giving that time because there's nothing more valuable to anyone. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas. Ms. Smith, do you wish to add anything?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay. So at this time then, we'll go to public comment. I know you guys are anxious, but we have to do public comment. So is there anybody who wishes to offer public comment on the acceptability of Mr. Gary Dove, Ms. Deborah Lang, or Ms. Sharice Smith? Okay. Then we'll bring it back to the board, and I'll entertain a motion. Now you can put your red lights on.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we appoint Gary Dove and Deborah Lang as Valley residents to this board and to Sharice Smith as the Tahoe Township representative.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Noasad, seconded by Commissioner Rice to appoint, reappoint Mr. Gary Dove, Ms. Deborah Lang, and Ms. Sharice Smith to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2025. Since there are no further discussion, all those in favor, do you have, you had additional comments?
I have additional comments.
Huh?
I do. Very short, very short.
I noticed that Mr. Dove made a comment in his application about wanting some playground, a playground or playground equipment that is suitable for kids with handicaps. And I've seen those. I've been to parks with my grandchildren that have those, and they are just wonderful. I really appreciate that thought. Ms. Lang, I really appreciate what you said about the fairgrounds and I think, and the river. And those are important to me, and I think that is great work. And Ms. Smith, I love that you walk the walk, you know, do the thing that you stand for. And I think you're all excellent and really appreciate your good service. Thank you.
So with that, we discussed the, all those in favor signify, all those in favor of the motion to reappoint Gary Dove, Deborah Lang, and Sharice Smith to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes five to zero. Okay. I'm going to take the discretion of the Chair. When I look at the other appointments that we have today, we have two boards that have the number of applicants for the number of positions. So I'm going to take a little bit out of order here, and we'll delay, and I beg the indulgence of those who came for the Planning Commission, we're going to do item number 10, and then we'll do number 12, and then we'll come back. Okay? I appreciate your indulgence to that. So we're going to go to item number 10. So that's for possible action discussion on the appointment of two community at large appointments and one Lake Tahoe Township member to the Senior Services and Public Transportation Advisory Board by the Board of County Commissioners for a two-year term, beginning January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2025, and the appointment of one member to serve the remaining unexpired term of a term of December 14th, 2023 through December 31st, 2024 due to, well, unexpected passing. So Ms. Davidson, do you have anything to add on item number 10?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record, as you note, you have four vacancies to consider filling and three applicants. Two of those applicants have currently served on the Senior Services and Public Transit Advisory Board. That is Ms. Lernhart and Mr. Lockwood. Staff see no, and we thank them for their service, staff see no procedural reason why they could not continue to serve in that capacity if it were the desire of the board. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would turn it back to you.
Thank you. And so I need to make a disclosure here. I know Antoinette Castleberry, more commonly known as Tony Castleberry, and I actually know her from the Elks Lodge. She's a fellow member of the Elks. And also, I do know that she also serves on our Young at Heart program. So with that in mind, and knowing that we would potentially have positions available here, I encouraged her personally to apply for this board. So I personally think she'll make a great addition to that board. We have three positions available. Well, I actually have four. One of them is an expired term, so we're going to need to go out to the public for that additional term anyways. But anyways, I just wanted to make that disclosure. And I don't see any of those individuals here today. So we won't be able, Paul was here earlier, but I guess he probably left for senior lunch. He always does. He always attends the senior lunch. So anyways, with that, any other comments, Commissioners? Okay. Then let's go to public comment on this. Is there any public comment on the acceptability of Antoinette Castleberry, Elizabeth Lernhart, or Felix, better known as Paul Lockwood, in their ability to serve on this board? Okay. Since we have a moment, I'll bring it back to the board and entertain a motion.
I move that we appoint Antoinette Castleberry and Paul Lockwood to the Carson Valley resident positions for the Senior Services and Public Transit Advisory Board, and Elizabeth Lernhart to the Tahoe Township position, and go back out to seek additional applicants for the fourth vacant position.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hales, seconded by Commissioner Noasad to appoint Antoinette Castleberry, Elizabeth Lernhart, and Paul Lockwood in their respective positions on the Senior Services and Public Transportation Advisory Board, and seek additional applicants for the remaining position with the public. Any other discussion? I just want to clarify, the additional person that we would need would be from the Valley floor. Is that, is that correct? I believe that's where Mr. Beamer was from.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. So, okay. Since there are no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that motion passes five to zero. And we're going to go now to item number 12 for possible action discussion on three appointments to the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee by the Board of County Commissioners for two-year terms of office, beginning January 2024 through December 31st, 2025, in accordance, in adherence with County Code 2.56. Ms. Davidson, anything you wish to add on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record, as you noted, we have three vacancies on the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee and three applicants. All three applicants have previously, previously served as members of this advisory board, and we thank them for their service. That is Mr. Hohn, Mr. Scosa, and Mr. Stodick. Staff see no procedural reason why they cannot continue serving in this capacity, and we turn it back to you, sir.
Thank you. So in full disclosure also, I do know Mr. Scosa, a very, very old, time-wise, community member and farmer in our community. So I want to recognize that. And also, and I serve with, on the Douglas County Sheriff's Mounted Posse with his daughter-in-law, not daughter-in-law, yeah, daughter, I guess, daughter-in-law because it's his son's wife. So, auntie, Scosa. And then also, I'll do this and I'll share this, I'm taking too much time here. And Fred Stodick is also a member and serves on the Carson Water Subconservancy District Board with both Commissioner Hales and myself. So I need to fully disclose that. But, so anyways, and I don't sense, oh, Mr. Lockwood's back from lunch. So anyways, none of the three candidates are here today. Mr. Lockwood, since you're here. Paul, you've been reappointed.
Did you leave because you were hoping you wouldn't be?
Okay. Okay. So we'll go to public comment on, did you have anything? I think we already discussed that. Okay. Public comment on the reappointment of Charles Hohn, Russell Scosa, or Frederick, better known as Fred, Stodick, for the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee. Okay. Since there are no further comment, no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move we appoint the three applicants to the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee.
You want to name those three?
Charles Hohn, Russell Scosa, Fred Stodick.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hales, seconded by Commissioner Rice to reappoint Mr. Hohn, Mr. Scosa, and Mr. Stodick to the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee for a period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2027. Ms. Davidson.
I move we appoint the three applicants to the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee.
You want to name those three?
Charles Hohn, Russell Scosa, Fred Stodick.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hales, seconded by Commissioner Rice to reappoint Mr. Hohn, Mr. Scosa, and Mr. Stodick to the Water Conveyance Advisory Committee for a period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2025, in adherence with County Code 2.56. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Something, Ms. Davidson, that I've always wondered is, code is specifying a two-year term, and I'm questioning whether or not we want to, may want to take a look at that code and extend those terms to perhaps longer periods of time, since these individuals, they, yes, they, they're certainly, yeah. I don't know if my other Commissioners concur, but we seem to do this every two years, appoint the same people to this particular board. This is like the fifth rail, right? Or the third rail. You don't touch it, you know? So these people have been conveying water throughout this county for a very long period of time, and boy, you try to move it around somewhere else, you get in real trouble here. Okay? But as Mark Klein said, whiskey's for drinking and water is for fighting. Okay? So you don't mess with these guys. Okay. So congratulations to those three. Okay. So at this time then, we will go back to item number nine for possible action discussion on two appointments to the Planning Commission by the Board of County Commissioners for a four-year term, beginning January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2027. Ms. Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. As you noted, sir, we have two vacancies for the board to consider making appointments, and we have four applicants. One of those individuals, Mr. Klutz, currently serves as a member of the Planning Commission, and we thank him for his service. We see no reason procedurally why he cannot continue in that capacity if that is the desire of the board. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would turn it back over to you.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll entertain comments by the applicants. Mr. Klutz, I know you was here.
Bryce Klutz, for the record. Good morning, Chairman Gardner, Vice Chairman Rice, Commissioner Hales, Commissioner Turkanyan, and Commissioner Noasad. I appreciate you having me today. Four years ago, I came before this body asking for the opportunity to serve my county as a planning commissioner. At that time, I committed that I would ensure that the master plan was adhered to, that our rural and agricultural heritage was preserved, and that growth was managed appropriately in... and in a sustainable manner. Although we've had some challenging issues come before us in the last four years, I believe the record will reflect that I did what I said I would do. In addition, I had the privilege of working with an incredible Douglas County community development staff and passionate citizens to update the 2020 Master Plan. I'm proud of the work we did, and if granted another four years, I look forward to continuing to work with our great team and other stakeholders in Douglas County to update Title 20. I'm grateful and honored that you provided me the opportunity to serve the last four years, and I would be grateful for the opportunity again today to work alongside my colleagues to carry on the great work that they have done. Thank you for your time, your service to this county, and Merry Christmas. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Commissioners, questions of Mr. Klutz? Commissioner Tarkanian?
No.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hales? Commissioner Noasad?
No, sir.
Okay, me neither, so thank you. And Ms. Holland, is Ms. Holland here? Doesn't appear that Ms. Holland is in attendance today, and Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mimi Moss. I appreciate the opportunity to apply for this position. All the information in my application talks to my history in working with the county for 24 years, 11 years as a Community Development Director, and five of those years as a Planning Manager. So with the updates to the master plan, I went through three of those already, and there will be another one coming up soon. Amendments to the Development Code, to the Design Manual, experience in that. But for the most part, I had a working relationship with the Planning Commissioners at the time because our department staffed the Planning Commission. So we know what the rules and the procedures are for meetings, the decorum required, and I hope that I, if, if I'm appointed, that I can further those elements of the Planning Commission that you, you respect and you, you need. I'm sorry, I don't have any prepared comments, I'm just, I'm winging it, but you might, you might ask the question, why am I back after five years of retirement and wanting to get in the middle of land development, land use? And I found that the last couple of months, and I came forward to the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners on several items, I found that my passion for land use is still there. I still care a lot about our community, I've lived here for almost 30 years, and I respectfully request that you consider my application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then we also, Mr. Xavier applied for this as well, is there any desire, he's already been appointed to the Wildlife Board, is there any desire to entertain? Okay, so I hope you understand that, Mr. Xavier also, okay, very good. So with that, we'll go to, is there any questions of, of the, of Ms. Moss or Mr. Klutz? No questions? I have a question of Ms. Moss, okay? Several years ago, in a public forum, I, you made a statement that we had, as a county, a moral obligation to provide workforce housing. I don't know if you recall that exchange, but could you explain that process again to me?
A moral obligation for providing workforce housing?
Yes.
Well, there are federal and state laws that communities have to follow, are required to follow. Some states are more restrictive than others. Previously, in the master plan, there was a housing element that spoke to affordable housing, and I understand, I haven't reviewed it completely with the update, I understand that parts of the language has been removed from the master plan that's been adopted, recently adopted. But there is a moral obligation to provide housing for every level in the community, whether they be rich or poor. The, the concern always has been with Douglas County is that we are kind of a, still a bedroom community from Carson City and Lake Tahoe, and that tends to bring the cost of living up higher because it's a desirable area to live. And so the, the, the hard part, the hardship has always been providing essential multifamily housing to the community where it's needed, because people perceive that as low-income housing, and they don't want it in their backyard, so it's the NIMBY effect. So with a strong master plan and a strong housing element, you can provide those incentives for developers to come forward and propose more affordable housing to serve the community.
Secondly, what's your opinion about the Growth Management Ordinance?
The Growth Management Ordinance is necessary. In, in the early 2000s, the population was moving very quickly, housing development, we had, you know, up to 700 residential permits every year, which, which was pretty ridiculous. So it was necessary, at that time, the community came forward, the public came forward and asked that the County Board of Commissioners limit growth. And therefore, in 2007, the Growth Management Ordinance was adopted, which sets forth the amount of residential development that's allowed each year. And it also recognized the amount of projects that were still on the books that hadn't been developed. So it recognized those projects as vested, so they did, so those projects would not have to come forward and get building permit allocations. Essentially, that's what the Growth Management Ordinance set forth, is limiting the number of building permits each year, and the forms for which someone may come forward in the future and want to, and, and ask for a larger development, that needed allocation set aside for that. So there's, there's provisions in the Growth Management Ordinance that speak to preserving natural resources, cultural heritage, infrastructure needs, and based on that, the Growth Management Ordinance set those limits for each, each year residential building permit limitations.
Thank you. Any additional questions, Commissioners? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your answers. Okay, so at this time, Commissioner Tarkanian did in Nashville, I'm sorry, did you have any questions for Ms. Moss?
No.
Both of her, okay, very good, then. At this time, we'll go to public comment.
Dan Ainsworth, this will be real short. I support Bryce Klutz, he should be automatic here, very well informed, does his homework, and expresses his thoughts well. I also support Mimi Moss, she brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the job. Based on the last comment there, I certainly hope we don't go through a Growth Management Ordinance revision, but I know I'm not supposed to say that here, but I did anyway. It would be a real shame if we didn't take advantage of her experience doing basically the same job she did before, but a totally different perspective. So I hope you'll appoint both of them to the Planning Commission.
Danny didn't sign in. I got you.
Signed in before.
That's okay, we have to sign in each time.
You're forgiven.
Ellie Waller, I also support Bryce Klutz and Mimi Moss. Institutional knowledge at this juncture of where we are in upcoming planning, Title 20 changes, master plan changes, growth management was mentioned, I believe both of them fit that term. Thank you.
Jason Gibson, I support both candidates, I would lean towards Mrs. Moss with questions for Mr. Klutz. Mr. Klutz, we have a strategic planning process that's undergoing, wondering why the Strategic Planning Commission isn't part of that process. Would also like to know why there isn't any social networking group that informs the public of issues that pertain to the Planning Commission. No one should be fooled or disillusioned, our rural way of life is over, it's gone, they've sold us out. And those who represent the Planning Commission, and I know there's a lot of detail to it, I'm always perplexed with the enormous amount of details and insight, but these folks just don't communicate like 21st century professionals. They could easily allocate an intern, a part-time intern to serve as a social media support agent, to help you in communicating with the general public, and serve as liaison to the other local governing bodies like South Shore, Tahoe, Carson, Reno, to find out what other governments are doing and what's working for them and what's not. And I'm here to tell you that South Shore Municipal Government is light years ahead of Douglas County dinosaurs because of this reason. So please, if you're on the Planning Commission, then advocate for the people by using your social networking skills, create the groups, and use the technology and the rich media and your Media Development Center at Douglas County High School to convey to the people what they need to know and to get the support that you need, so that you're feeling good about the decisions you're making on our behalf. This tension between the people and our body politic is at such a point to where people are either afraid to show up to speak their minds, or they're not showing up because they're afraid of being targeted, or government folks who are representing the people don't feel respected or honored in what they do and appreciated, and we all need to raise the bar on how we serve each other, so please, vote both of these folks in, give them the incentives they need to do a professional job and take it to the next level. Thank you.
Additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, then bring it back to the Board. Commissioner Hales, you look like you were reaching for your microphone, or not?
I'm ready to throw some thoughts out. I'm in full support of Bryce Klutz, he's been an exemplary public servant. I have spent a lot of time thinking about the other position, and I have concerns. I have concerns that Ms. Holland is not experienced enough in this area. I have concerns that Mimi Moss is too experienced in this area. I believe that there would be occasions when documents with her signature, cases she worked on, could come back before the Planning Commission, and I haven't done a technical analysis of whether there would be a conflict, an official conflict. I think it would be complex. I think, I think it could concern applicants for something or other if there were a document in a case that were already decided by Ms. Moss. And I'm also a little bit concerned about the dynamic on the Commission with having someone who was such a long-term expert in, in, in the field, and I think we want citizen servants on that, on that committee. And, and so although I have a lot of respect for the, the work and the, the previous commitment to the county, and I appreciate the willingness you have, Ms. Moss, to serve, I'm hesitant. And for that reason, my opinion is we should appoint Bryce and go back out for the second.
Thank you. I would make the same observations, Commissioner Hales, that you've made, with all due respect, Ms. Moss. I, I agree that when I look at the applicants as well, Ms. Holland is, is very focused on healthcare, and, and, but I, I'm also overly concerned about the, as, as you've stated, Ms. Hales, the, the overqualification perhaps of Ms. Moss. This is an absolutely critical Board now, and I don't want any of the members of the other Advisory Boards to take, take this out of context, but of all the Boards, this one is in land use and in, and interpretation of Title 20, and, which is absolutely critical to the county, and so I, I, I'd want to make sure that we get this right. We need to call you right back, I'm in a meeting. I would prefer to, also to, to perhaps, I think Bryce has done a commendable job, an exemplary job on, on the Planning Commission, I don't want to cut them too short, but, so I would, I would concur with the, the appointment, reappointment of Mr. Klutz, but I too would like to place this additional person, this additional appointment back out to the public for, for possible additional applicants. Commissioner Noasad, you had a?
Hey, I'm getting a little confused here. For the Planning Commission, we're going to appoint two. We have three applicants. Where's the other one coming in?
I guess what I'm saying is reappoint Mr. Klutz, and then, and then we would have an additional position available still, without the appointment of one of either Ms. Holland or Ms. Moss. That would leave us one position, we're going out to the public already, as I recognize, for one more individual for the Department, for the Wildlife, one for the Senior Services, one for Audit, and, and this would be an additional request by the public for additional applicants for, for Planning Commission. That's where.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking at the spreadsheet for Planning Commission, right there it says two to appoint. We have three applicants, so we have to pick two from those three.
I don't know that we're required to, but we can ask our County Manager to weigh in on this about our requirement to appoint three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager. This is, I was not anticipating a legal question at this meeting where I would have asked the DA's office to attend. My review of County Code is that a, if the Board is not satisfied with the applications you have before you, you can put out, again, there is no absolute timeline for appointment. I think this could be further justified or evidenced by the fact that we have made appointments to the Planning Commission after the first of the year. I would recommend that we make appointments to the Planning Commission as quickly as possible because it is an important Advisory Board, and we do not want to leave them too long without, without full membership, especially when a number of their votes require supermajorities of that Board. It's, it's essential that we have each of those positions filled, so I would recommend you proceed quickly if we're to go back out, and if we're to complete our due diligence, we will need at least two weeks to advertise, but I, my interpretation of County Code is that you're not required to make both appointments today.
Mr. Chairman, can I weigh in for a second?
Yes, Mr. Tarkanian.
I'm all in favor of Mimi Moss, and I'm not sure what the reservations are, she has more background and experience in this. If you're saying you can't be in a county position and then be on the Planning Commission, then you're sure limiting the qualifications and experience of a lot of people. And for, you know, Bryce Klutz, very successful builder, but he's a builder too then, are you going to say, well, you know, we Are you going to say, well, you know, we don't want to have any builders on because of different projects that come before him that may interfere with his job? I think, in a nutshell, I think Mimi Moss is more qualified than any of the applicants we've had up there, and I think it's a disservice. I mean, everybody, you guys can have your opinion, but I think it's a disservice to her to even question whether she's qualified or not.
Still confused. So what we're saying then is we have applicants whom we can tell, say no to. We do. And who's the no one? Which one of these people is the no?
I would suggest that I'm not comfortable with either.
So you're saying both Amanda Holland and Mimi Moss should be not accepted?
I would like to see additional applicants from the community. If there's nobody else that submits applicants, then we're going to be back to the same point.
Okay, so you're saying that we won't make a consideration on these three people until we have more applicants?
My feeling was that I don't want to leave the Planning Commission too short, and we have an individual who has served in Bryce Klutz, and so I would be comfortable with the reappointment of a current Planning Commission to that board for the four years. I would like to look at additional applicants based on being not comfortable with the other two applicants.
All right, so you're then saying Bryce Klutz is acceptable to the board and the other two are not. We want more applicants. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner wish to weigh in? Entertain a motion then. Who wants to offer a motion?
Oh, hell, I'm not up for reelection. I move that we accept the application for Bryce Klutz for the Planning Commission and that we go out and seek further candidates.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to reappoint Bryce Klutz to the Planning Commission and then return to the public for additional applicants for the remaining position. Is that the correct motion? Okay. Any further discussion? All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Tarkanian, do you wish to...
I'm a no.
You're a no. Okay, so that motion passes four to one, okay? We appreciate your applications, and certainly I would encourage the two that haven't, that did not get selected to reapply, right? We will hold those, okay? So, okay, very good. And before we go to the next one, I believe Mr. Scossa has joined us. Am I correct? There you go. So, Mr. Scossa, I would let you know that we took the appointments to the Water Conveyance Advisory Board out of order, and you have already been reappointed. So, appreciate your attendance and continue to make the waters flow properly in the county. We appreciate the longtime role you've played in the community in that regard. So, okay, and say hello to your son and daughter-in-law. So, okay. Okay, I guess we're down to, are we down to one? I think we're down to one. Okay, yeah, the easy one. Okay, for possible action, item number 11, for possible action, discussion on two appointments to the Vacation Home Rental VHR Advisory Board for two four-year terms beginning January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2027, in adherence with county code 2.2020, county code 20.622. One appointment is for a resident of the Tahoe Township as a current VHR permit holder. The one and one appointment is for a resident of the Tahoe Township who is not a current VHR permit holder. Each member shall be paid $60 per meeting. Ms. Davidson, did you have anything that you wish to add to that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I apologize for all of my coughing. I am feeling a little bit under the weather and can't seem to shake this. So, anyway, moving very quickly to our Vacation Home Rental Advisory Board, as noted by you, sir, we have two vacancies to appoint and one, two, three, four, five individuals who have applied. Two of those individuals have previously served as advisory board members. That is Ms. Hempler as the chair of the advisory board, and also Mr. Wolfson, who was recently appointed to fill a vacancy. With that, Mr. Chairman, I turn it over to the board for your discussion.
Okay. And I would also note that Mr. Xavier also applied for this board. We have previously appointed him to the Wildlife Board, so is there any desire for this board to consider him for that board?
No, sir.
Okay. So anyways, we have Ms. Gunter, I know she's here today, I know we have Ms. Hempler, is Mr. Wolfson here? Okay, and also Terry Zagger. I don't see her. Okay, so, Ms. Gunter, would you like to...
My name is Heidi Gunter. Most of you know, my husband and I own a management company up in Tahoe. It's called World Class Property Management, and we also live up at the lake full-time. As far as the ordinance is concerned, I am very, very supportive of all the rules and the enforcement, so much that I have actually turned people in, myself, for breaking the rules. Having worked in the industry for more than 11 years, I have a lot of hands-on, real-life experience in every aspect of the vacation rentals. Also, if this board appoints Mickey Hempler, I know she has worked very hard on this board, she's also a good candidate, and she's just spent a lot of time volunteering on the board. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions on Ms. Gunter? Is Mr. Tarkanian left us again?
I'm right here.
Okay, I didn't see your face up there anymore, so, okay. Do you have any questions for Ms. Gunter?
No.
Okay. Other commissioners? Commissioner Noah Sad?
Ms. Gunter, are you a VHR owner right now?
No, sir. I do not hold a permit, and I don't have any intention of getting a permit for my residence.
Thank you.
I would like to say this, that Ms. Gunter and I are familiar with each other. She has contemplated running for county commission, and I would like to see you do so in the future. She's very involved in the community. If I remember correctly, your husband is a schoolteacher up there? No?
We just volunteer at our local elementary school all the time.
Okay, I understand. I had five daughters, so. Anyway, I have the greatest respect for Ms. Gunter. However, Ms. Hempler and Mr. Wolfson have done a very good job, in fact, I would say exemplary job, working on the rules, regulations, and trying to get this thing under control. And as much as I respect you and like you, I'm afraid that I'm going to have to go with the existing members, so I want you to understand that. Thank you.
Understood, and they have done a very good job with their volunteer time, so no hard feelings if they are kept on their position on the board.
Thank you.
And I would make the same recognition. I mean, we have two positions here, but they're very different, okay? One has to be a non-permit holder and the other one has to be a permit holder. And so we have two applicants for the non-permit holder, and that's the current incumbent and yourself. And then for our permit holders, we have Glenn Wolfson and Terry Zagger. So that's, those are our choices today on this board. Thank you. Commissioner, okay, so everybody else is, okay. And so now we'll hear from Ms. Hempler. You don't have to take time, but you're welcome to take time.
I just want to say hi. Mickey Hempler, and I just wanted to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to serve on this board. I picked the short straw when we had to stagger the terms when we started this, and I got the two-year term, so I would love the opportunity to serve a full four-year term. Thank you.
Yes, I guess that's the question, and so as long as you brought it up, I'll address that. So when we went into this election and put this code into place, we selected five members. However, there was no designation there of which would serve two-year terms and which would serve four-year terms, and so they drew straws, and I don't know whether Ms. Hempler drew the long straw or the short straw. I, you know, sometimes I'm sure you have your doubts whether or not it was, but anyways, that's why Ms. Hempler is back before us so quickly. And also, Mr. Wolfson is, he's not here today, but he is serving a partial term of an individual that resigned from that board. So is that what you were going to share with us, Ms. Davidson, or did you have other disclosures?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jennifer Davidson. I don't mean to belabor this, but I think in my haste and my headache, I failed to thank both Ms. Hempler and Mr. Wolfson for their service on this advisory board, and also Ms. Hempler for her previous service on the VHR task force. It's been a pleasure working with that advisory board. This advisory board is near and dear to my heart. So with that, we see no procedural reason why those individuals couldn't continue in serving, if that is the desire of the board.
Thank you. And I would also recognize the fact that we have our vice chair, Lauren Romaine, right? You remain as the, you remain as Romaine, and you were the vice chair. Yes. Little play on words there, okay? Trying to add some humor to the day. Okay, and so Mr. Wolfson's not here. I do, I did, I do want to acknowledge the fact that actually whenever we've had vacation home rental questions come before us, he has been in attendance at our meetings, so that's very admirable. I appreciate that. And Ms. Zagger is not here today, I don't believe, so anyways, we'll go to, at this time, if there's no other questions or comments from the board, we'll go to public comment. Mr. Ainsworth.
Dan Ainsworth, for the last time. This is a really tough one because of the ordinance rules. I support Mickey Hempler. I think that we need continuity on the board, especially now because the board is tasked with looking at VHR density, neighborhood by neighborhood. They struggled before with this, but Mickey has vowed to make it happen next year. She's done a good job as chair, and I recommend she continue in that role in 2024. But I also recommend Heidi Gunter, who I've gotten to know well over the last couple of years. As she said, she's the owner of World Class Property Management along with her husband, Jaren. They manage 45 VHRs in Tahoe, and they do it very well. They go over and above the VHR ordinance rules in their management role and have great reviews as managers. Obviously, she has the unique experience and perspectives that owners and renters individually do not. I know that you have to select between Mickey and Heidi, which is really a shame here. Maybe you could rationalize that a VHR property manager could qualify to be appointed to the position of a VHR permit holder. That's probably a stretch. So I have a suggestion and a request. I suggest that you take an action item and consider somewhere down the line here, changing the ordinance rules to mandate a property manager be part of the advisory board. So a couple of VHR permit holders, a couple of non-permit holders, and a property manager. They offered key experiences part of the original task force, which I was on, as you well know, and would do the same as a member of this board. Thanks.
It's for the record.
Did you say Dan, or did you say dad?
I understand the record-keeping. This is to help Marcia, who does a great, exceptional job along with all the clerk staff, Ellie Waller. I sat through 99% of the vacation home rental meetings, and I am, I truly believe that the seated people should remain for lots of reasons. They've been at the meetings where all of this goes on, and it's hard to play catch-up with all the changes. And no disrespect to any other applicants, I think right now, it was stated quite well that we do need to continue the continuity so they can get on with the process. I believe the group that's there can continue and should be allowed to continue, and that's my comment.
Thank you.
Hi there, Lauren Romaine. Just very quickly, continuity is really key. We have a lot of issues. Mr. Wolfson has been fantastic as a permit holder, brings a lot of perspective, and of course, you guys know McGee. You know, it's been a tough road, there's a lot to learn, there's a lot to know, and so the continuity, I think, right now is truly key. And we are five people with differing perspectives, VHR permit holders, non-permit holders, and I think it's a good group to move us forward through what we need to get through. So, thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Yeah, you know, Ms. Hempler not only drew the short stick for two years, but then she got appointed as chairman and has been chairman since the inception. And I know that's been an extremely difficult task, and we appreciate the, you know, we don't often enough tell you how much we appreciate the activities of our advisory boards and how much we need your input. And you have taken on a monumental task here in putting a new county code into place and working through that, and so I can't thank you enough, okay? Appreciate your, and so that's my comments. Anybody else?
Yeah. Mr. Ainsworth, thank you for that idea. It's a good idea. The property manager, possibly adding that, and of course, we'd have to add another something because you can't have six, you'd need seven, but that would be something to consider. And I just wanted to say how much I respect Heidi Gunter and wish we could write into the ordinance, all VHRs will be managed by Heidi and her husband, but we probably can't do that. But if we did, certainly a lot of problems would be gone. But anyway, I just really respect you being willing and just so doing such a good job at the things you do. Thank you.
She said that tongue-in-cheek, Ms. Gunter. Commissioner Tarkanian, anything you wish to add?
No.
No? Okay. Commissioner Noah Sad, Commissioner Rice?
No, sir.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reappoint Mickey Hempler and Glenn Wolfson to the two open positions on the Vacation Home Rental Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rice, second by Commissioner Noah Sad, to reappoint Mickey Hempler, representing the non-permit holder in Tahoe Township, and Mr. Glenn Wolfson as the permit holder in the Tahoe Township, to the Vacation Home Advisory, Vacation Home Rental Advisory Board for two four-year terms beginning January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2027, in adherence with county code 20.622. Since you know further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. There you go, Ms. Gunter, I mean, Ms. Hempler and... There you go, Ms. Gunter, I mean, Ms. Hempler and Mr. Wolfson, and we appreciate once again your interest, Ms. Gunter and Ms. Zager. And so onward, right? So I know you and Skip enjoy those stipends you get for your... Yeah, roll your eyes. Okay. Ms. Davidson, do you have something you wish to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. I just have a housekeeping item before we go to closing public comment. In case the public is interested, the Board's Committees and Commissions' policies and procedures that govern the majority of the board that we saw today can be found on the Douglas County website. It was adopted on April 5th, 2018. Subsequently, each of the Board's Committees and Commissions began presenting their annual reports or submitting their annual reports to the County Commission. This began in 2019 in February 6 specifically. The 2019 report was presented. The 2020 report was presented on February 4th of 2021. The 2021 annual report was presented on February 3rd of 2022, and the 2022 annual report, as I mentioned, was presented in March. I appreciate the feedback about... From the public regarding the ease of finding these reports, and I'm happy to discuss it further with any members of the public who have questions on where they can find these documents. We take great pride in ensuring the transparent operations of government, and I would just encourage those individuals who are asking where they can find reports to approach me separately outside of these meetings. I'm happy to mention to any documents they are looking for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I have a housekeeping item also that I wanted to articulate. So as I... We appreciate everybody... Once again, we appreciate all of the advisory board appointees and the time that they put in on a volunteer basis, most cases, on behalf of the county, and once again, we're very blessed with probably 300 or 400 volunteers at least on different boards and committees that we have, and their input is important to us because we can't possibly do it all ourselves. But I do want to recognize that... So where we are on this is we still... So we will have to go out to the public and solicit more applicants. One position on the advisory board to manage wildlife, one position on our Audit Committee, one position on our Planning Commission, and one position on our Senior Services and Public Transportation Advisory Board. Is that... Are my notes correct, Ms. Johnson? Okay, very good. Thank you. So we can expect to post that today's Thursday. We can expect to post that by probably Monday, okay? And we would allow the public two weeks, two... Pardon me?
Two consecutive.
Two consecutive weeks, okay? And we're going into the Christmas holiday, so that would cause us a... We'd have to extend it a little bit because of the Christmas holiday, right? Okay. And then we would bring that back to the board somewhere in the middle of January, I take it, right? So we can get those four boards fully staffed. Okay. Very good. With that, any other Commissioners have any comments? Then we'll go to closing public comment. Okay? And we've done a pretty good job today. I mean, 1:30 with only one 10-minute break, right?
Yep.
That's good. Okay.
Mr. Walter, would you see me before you leave tonight?
Kirk, did you hear that? Mr. Rice wants to visit with you before you leave. Okay. So at this time, closing public comment. Public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of Commissioners, or those agenda items where public comment has not already been taken.
Ellie Waller, volunteer watchdog. TRPA Governing Board meeting yesterday was a marathon meeting. Main topic was de-restricted affordable housing. It did pass with Secretary of State Aguilar from Nevada supporting the public's request to deny. It was long, it was arduous, more to come. At one of the committees, the Transportation Committee at TRPA had an agenda item for the 777 Plan, which was a legislative action that I followed in the last session, and it was pulled, but we were allowed public comment. My public comment was fairly brief, but I stated that I think all the local jurisdictions need to understand, if this passes, there is a request. I don't know how it may be mandated, but 777 stands for three different groups: public and private partnerships, local jurisdictions is a category, and fed and state is another category. They're going to ask Douglas County for $7 million a year for 20 years to fill the gap that TRPA, to help up there, get a transportation system in. I stated that Douglas County has a backlog of millions just for our locals. I tried to be respectful yesterday, like I'm trying to be respectful today. I think when we go forward with the master plan, the definition of rural is essential, and I liken that to the VHR density. I'm asking you folks, don't be dense about density. A definition needs to come forward so we can move on with that policy. The event center, we all want it to be successful. I believe it's falsely stated that they are going to try to have... Try, I get the word "try," to have off-season shoulder-season events. Well, New Year's Eve is already a debacle up in South Shore. It's hard for law enforcement. And yeah, I'm really struggling with what to say and not to say today, but I will. The elephant in the room on the VHR is I have great respect for Heidi for what she does in her job, but she also brought a lawsuit with other people to this board, so sorry.
We're running out of money, so you have to provide your own pin.
Okay. On...
I got one.
There you go. Well, there are three. Maureen Casey, first speaking as an individual. I've been sitting through these appointment hearings for nine years. Well done, record time, and I have no quarrel with any of the appointments you made. Speaking for the Planning Commission, thank you for the reappointment of Bryce Klutz. He is such a fantastic asset to the Planning Commission. His knowledge is invaluable. He is a strong voice for the environment, for technical skills, for planning in general, and we look to him in many instances to explain variances for construction and just for his facts and his clarity. There is no baloney when it comes to Bryce. He is so clear in his speech. No fluff. It's wonderful. And also, I want to thank you for when you spoke about Mimi. She is so professional, and her depth of knowledge is... It's amazing. But when you spoke about how you want to keep the Planning Commission to a citizen level and have basically citizen statesmen sitting at the Planning Commission, that hadn't occurred to me, but you're correct. You don't want a planning commission full of professionals with that depth of knowledge. It changes the whole tone and the whole color of what you're looking for because you want residents to make the decisions, not a skilled level. And this light bulb went off, and thank you as a resident and as a member of the Planning Commission. Merry Christmas.
Jason Gibson, I don't mean to step on your goodwill, lady, and Mr. Klutz, but you're catering to an economic facet of high-income corporate culture that's not sustainable. Mrs. Moss clearly was taking down... She was taking us down the path of tiny homes and efficient work-housing alternatives. We don't see that in Douglas County. And all I'm seeing from outside of my experience with the Planning Commission is this machine that has essentially compromised the rural characteristics of our county and is not sustainable, and is driving the cost of living so high that those of us who grew up here will not be able to live here. And the kind of people that you're catering to, these monster head... Monster meathead truckers and this kind of blockhead mentality, it's just... It's very sad compared to the culture we had in the 80s. I'm going to take the advantage to draw attention to my issue with this board and bring to the attention of the general public the kind of tactics that are being used to keep me from participating in these meetings. Last Thursday, I appeared before the board to let you know that I pro se appealed the right to travel. The following day, they used the new judge, Judge Johnson, out of the Tahoe District, probably compelled by Doug Ritchie, to issue a warrant for my arrest or threaten me with a warrant for my arrest, claiming that I wasn't responding to a summons that I never received. I was threatened with a three-day appearance, and they moved the case from the township here up to the lake to make it more difficult for me to travel, knowing that they pirated and stole my vehicle, so that I have to take public transit, which is not as reliable in the ranchos in the wintertime. So they're doing everything in their power to essentially ambush me without due process, without competent counsel. And the things that we're going to bring forward that show the way that this Jalek Enterprise is doing business is going to shock you. It's going to be staggering. But we have enough evidence to show now that there is a conspiracy that is being represented by this body politic, the Jalek stakeholders, Douglas County sheriffs, and we plan to expose it and to bring in federal resources by which to hold you fully accountable for facets of racketeering and treason.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Since you know additional public comment, I do want to congratulate those individuals who were selected today: Dennis Calora, Christine Mills, Michael Bradford, Virginia Starrett, Robert Trumbly, A.J. Ersec, Paul Howell, Kevin Carr, Michael Xavier, Elaine Pace, Tim Miller, Robert Centoni, Margaret Tracy, Marian Vassar, Starla Doty, Jermaine Murco, Teresa Olivera, Gary Dove, Deborah Lang, Sharice Smith, Bryce Klutz, Antoinette Castleberry, Elizabeth Lernhart, Paul Lockwood, Mickey Hempler, Glenn Wolfson, Mr. Charles Hohn, Mr. Scosa, and Frederick Stodick. So congratulations, and once again, we appreciate the other members who remain on those boards, and we appreciate their due diligence in their different advisory board positions. So with that, I would remind the public, we have another Board of Commissioners meeting next Thursday, starting at 10 o'clock here in these chambers. With that, the meeting is... Since we have no other business, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Recording stopped.